We're all set, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I want to welcome everyone to the June 18, 2020, Town Council meeting. Before we begin, I must say that this meeting is being recorded and transmitted by the Town of Barnstable and is being broadcast over Channel 18. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, if anyone is planning to make an audio or video recording or transmit the meeting, they are required to notify the Chair before doing so. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, this is a roll call for our quorum, please.
You're muted, Anne.
All right. Councillors Beeden Bender.
Here.
Bogan. Clark.
Here.
Daggone.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Present.
President.
Mary.
Here.
Schnepp.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
And Stein Hilber. Thank you, that's 13.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask the councillors to mute themselves and I've asked Madam Vice President to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will now have a moment of silence, please. Thank you all. We will now open for a public comment. I will just make a few comments first. If you're here to speak about the about the regulatory agreement, item number 2020-185, you're certainly free to do so, I just want to let you know that we appreciate your comment, but we are not going to be taking that particular item up tonight. We're going to be moving it to next week on the 25th. We'll be talking more about that a little later on. I don't anticipate that we're going to get through the entire budget this evening and so therefore, we have already said in motion I need to have another meeting next week. And then we're also going to position ourselves for the 26th in the event that we are not able to finish budget. We will do it on Friday, the 26th. The reason we're doing this is we are under obligation to vote in our entire operational budget by the end of June. If we don't do that, then the town would have to take the budget of last year, divided by 12, and operate under that month by month, based on the fact that we did not have passed a budget. So I think we owe it to the citizens of this town to complete our work on the budget. And we have to do maybe some extra work. So let's all get to it, we'll try to move it tonight. My goal is not to rush any councillors, but everybody speaks, everybody gets their questions answered. We make the very best decisions we possibly can. And feeling under a lot of pressure and being rushed, it doesn't work for anyone. So let's take a deep breath, work together, make sure we do a good job, and then after we will extend. I will be talking again more about that because I really want your vote and permission to have this, the other meeting. You have a right to be notified before, we might call continuance meeting, but I'm going to ask for an exemption, you don't have to get it in writing. And we'll do that a little later on. So thank you very much. We're going to now open it up for public comment.
Yes, the first public comment is Janet. Janet, now's your chance to speak.
Hi, my name is Janet Davis. I'm co-chair of Centerville Concerned Citizens and I'll quickly state why I'm speaking tonight. We learned from our attorney, Paul Revere, that the federal judge overseeing the T-Mobile court case versus the Town of Barnstable reversed the decisions of the Planning Board and Zoning Boards. This court has ordered the issuance of a judgment in T-Mobile's favor, which would require the town to issue all necessary permits for the T-Mobile tower on Main Street, Centerville. I first want to express our disappointment at this setback. We find this decision unjust and is worthy of an appeal by the town. We know the town values its mission to protect Barnstable's quality of life, unique character, and inept policies that respond to the needs of its community. By following the intent of the town mission to protect the town's unique character, we ask the town legal team to continue its efforts to stop the completion of the T-Mobile tower on historic Main Street. We must thank both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board for their efforts. Now more than ever, we must continue to push back on the overproliferation of these massive installations in our community that are increasingly encroaching on our right to a safe and peaceful existence in our neighborhoods. Just this week, Marston Mills residents contacted us after learning Echo Site Incorporated submitted a request to the FCC for a 149-foot Monopole Tower on 111 Wakeby Road. As a town, we have to ask ourselves, when is enough enough? We ask the town to appeal the district court's findings and fight on on this case. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. If I could just ask you to leave.
Sure.
Thank you. Joanne, it's your chance for public comment.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Nuckman. I am on Main Street in Centerville. I'm actually less than 100 feet from the Congregational Church and I am in my apartment above the Country Store. And I would like to show you the window where I'm sitting. This will just take me a second. So I think you may be able to see the property of the church from here. To say that we were, the town represented us in a less than apt way is not enough. We begged both the previous town attorney as well as the attorney assigned to our case to hire an expert to disprove the fact that T-Mobile says that they have a lack in coverage in this area. We offered to pay for half of it. It would have been about $5,000 for the town to put out for this expert. We would have come up with the other $5,000. And now we sit and wonder, will the town give up or will the town step up and help us appeal this because it's wrong? I don't have anything else to say, but I do want to show you a picture. I see out of that window I just showed you. That's the steeple of the church. And I have another one. This, you can hardly see, but the lights, this was last night I was taking this photo. The lights were coming on across the street where other residents live and they are also less than 100 feet away from this monstrosity. So I am begging the town once more to help us to fight this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Joanne, thank you.
Yep, next up for public comment is Molly Sproul.
Thank you.
Molly, you need to unmute.
Sorry. My name is Molly Sproul and my husband and I reside on Main Street in Centerville, right across from the Congregational Church where the steeple has installed the equipment for T-Mobile. We are beyond disappointed in the decision that was made in favor of T-Mobile and feel compelled to express our extreme disappointment and the lack of follow-through that the town demonstrated on behalf of the citizens. Now more than we ever could have imagined, we are aware of the uncontrollable threats to our health and safety. The situation clearly could have been controlled. It is not an invisible threat, it is very visible. The evidence and nationwide movements against 5G inspired us to become empowered while others are chosen to ignore. We ask that you prioritize the fight against this known threat under the direction of committed legal guidance. Choose to go forward in strength with the many communities who have stood up against this as your citizens have been pleading with you to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Molly.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had invited someone and they haven't popped over yet.
Do we have Lynn with us tonight too?
Yes, she's letting me know when she has public comment on the phone.
I thank you.
Kate Connolly, now is your chance for public comment, thank you. Oh, sorry, you're the Assistant Town Attorney. It's funny, I apologize. I did that, I did that at the last meeting as well, I'm sorry. Dee Hennessy for public comment.
I'm not here for public comment, I'm here for listening and understanding.
We're asking if you're just looking to watch the meeting or listen to the meeting. You do so either on Channel 18 or via our livestream on the town's website.
Okay.
Thank you, Miss Hennessy.
Next up, we have Lucas McCauley and Lily Beal.
Hi.
Hi, Lucas.
You guys can hear me, right? Hi. I am Lucas McCauley from the Barnstable Youth Commission. I am the chairman and I have Lily Beal with me. She's the vice chair and we would like to just read out our statement that upon the Black Lives Matter movement that's currently occurring, we voted it, voted upon it on Tuesday and yeah. The Barnstable Youth Commission is a group of high school students representing the Town of Barnstable youth in many schools in the town and beyond. We are appointed by the Barnstable Town Council and our purpose is to determine and act upon the issues the youth of our community face and being their voice when they cannot be heard.
The Youth Commission has seen the hurt and real our nation and for that reason, we felt it was necessary to voice our support behind the Black Lives Matter movement and specifically the POC youth in our community. We must work hard to implement positive change throughout the Town of Barnstable and beyond and in all ways, in all ways to create a brighter future and this issue is no different. We are determined to show our support for this movement in any way possible and for the leaders in this unit.
Thank you for listening. That's it.
Thank you both for being with us tonight. Thank you. Have a good, safe summer, huh?
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for public comment, Devon Burris. Devon, are you ready? I don't seem to be able to hear her computer. Oh, there she is. Did you see that, maybe at least seven?
Hi, I'm sorry, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, I'm Devon Carrion. I'm sorry I missed about the last 15 minutes, so I have to apologize for that. I'm not exactly sure what I missed. I wanted to just express my concern about the cell tower and the steeple at the self-congregational church in Centerville. Basically, just coming from a mother's point of view, I'm just extremely concerned about the installation of that T-Mobile tower with the radiation. I grew up in Centerville, spent a lot of time in Centerville, specifically in the village there and my, my children spend a lot of time there and a lot of my friends and their children do too. So just really wanted to voice my concerns about that and just urge the town to do whatever we can do to appeal that. And that, that's pretty much it, just wanted to voice my concern there.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Have a good, safe summer, okay?
Thank you, same to you.
Next, we have John Crowe.
Thank you for hearing my comments. At the June 4th Town Council meeting, I was taken to task for my public records request and for a quote in the press. I rang with people telling me the councillor used the words repulsive, fear monger, and conspiracy theories. If the council actually wants to dissuade citizens from seeking public records, taking me to task for it during a public meeting is a great approach. I asked for documents about an Airbnb shooting in Barnstable in January. I made the request because no one, not one public official, not one councillor who voted for One Night Rentals that even Airbnb calls high risk, no one has talked about it. I have a right to records and to facts, so does the public. The councillor used the word repulsive also announced on Channel 18 that I would be disappointed with the results of my records request. Maybe. I may be disappointed if not one councillor on the zoning subcommittee that approved Mini Stay Airbnb regulations didn't know about our Airbnb shooting. I'd be disappointed if ignorant of the risks, they voted to allow these Mini Stay rentals next to each and every one of us. I'll also be disappointed if anyone did know and kept it from the public. Our Airbnb shooting was the 87th one this year. That's about one a week. They get reported nationally, just not here. The Cape Cod Times and the Barnstable Patriot have had publicly available information about this shooting now for months. They've chosen not to report it. Local news reporting seems to be on a downward spiral. So I'm glad our citizens group is now forming a news service focused on our local government. Some time ago where I lived, we had a spree of 19 home break-in. It was kept quiet until I, as Vice President of the Astoria Village Association, asked the police to brief our citizens. Criminals were caught the next day because of a newly informed resident. Barnstable's first Airbnb shooting that has been kept quiet was followed by a manhunt for five masked men who fled into a residential neighborhood around South and C Streets in Hyannis. The police scanner described a wide-area lockdown to allow for hours-long manhunt. The police have confirmed this verbally. Only a short few minutes on Google shows that this Airbnb is one of six homes that the owner has removed from housing stock to run as a business. Many of you may know this Airbnb operator from positions she holds on various public boards. I raised the issue of risk at anonymous one- and two-night unsupervised stays to the zoning subcommittee back in March, when it was proposed to allow them next door to every one of us. I was told then by a councillor who lived near where this shooting occurred just a month earlier, that talking about stabbings and shootings was getting a little far off the beaten path. I don't think it's that far at all. I was called a fear monger at your last meeting for a comment of the Barnstable Patriot about drug use at Mini Stay Airbnb. That comment came from experience, as reported by residents in my village who live near these unsupervised Mini Stays, Airbnbs. That comment, Mini Stays, Mini Stays, that's not fear monger. My quote was not only taken out of context but from a completely separate, unrelated conversation a full week before that article. I said it when asking the press again to finally report on the actual Airbnb shooting in January. In that same story, a councillor said, "The unknown is what we often, what often breeds the most fear." Be clear about this. Our citizens worry about what we actually know, what we've actually seen and what we ourselves have actually heard on the police scan. Actually, we worry about what decision-makers seem not to know as you go about making decisions affecting our neighborhood. President Hebert, we trust all councillors to be fully informed with the facts prior to voting. When some of us out here appear to know more facts than you, it's a big worry. When Barnstable Civic Association input and resident experience is something our officials seem to endure, but don't let it affect what they do, that's a big story. That's a big worry. Please learn all the facts. Please don't vote on regulations about what our neighborhoods will look like without all of these facts. Please also share those facts with the public. It is our neighborhoods, our homes, and we need more than just a mere of public input. We should be better than that. Thank you.
Paul, you're muted.
Thank you very much, John, I appreciate that. I think we have some other public comment. I'm going to ask Ms. Devon if you could watch us on Channel 18 and leave, leave the meeting, so we need to slot, okay? Thank you. We have another speaker?
Sharon DeFrancesco.
Sharon, it's good to unmute her.
There you go, Sharon.
So sorry, my apologies. Are we still okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Adverse biological effects of EMR from cellphone towers have been observed in birds, bees, and humans alike. Sadly, this fact comes as a surprise to many because it isn't offered up in most discussions. Why not? Because it is, as the saying goes, terribly inconvenient to those who benefit from cell tower placement. Who are those reaping the benefits of these cell towers? Certainly, anyone using a cellphone in its vicinity enjoys the luxury of wireless communication. And for that luxury, they pay handsomely. And therein lies the rub. How do bad things tend to happen to good people? For the answer, we must follow the money and big telecom is, without doubt, very big money. We also know that in 1996, 24 long years ago, the FCC was magic sword when it came to erecting telecom hardware. That TCA legislation was wrong then and today, if we look at the thousands of research points collected over the more than two decades since, we easily see that it is even more wrong now. But the FCC is allowed to bring harm to millions despite towers of evidence that show cell towers to be dangerous at varying levels. If you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. To grant yet another installation despite mounting proof of the harm they inflict means this runaway train becomes harder to stop, until perhaps one of your loved ones is caught in its path. Until the laws are based on up-to-date, accurate data about the very real effects of EMFs on all biological life, including humans, it is a dereliction of your duty to all citizens to allow even one more tower into our precious, fragile environment. Thank you.
You're muted, Paul.
Thank you very much, Sharon, and you have a good, safe summer.
Thank you.
We have Michael Delaney. Michael, if you'd like to speak to public comment, now's your chance.
No, thank you, not at this time.
Sharon and Michael, if you could do me a favor and log off and continue watching Channel 18 or via our livestream, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for public comment at this time, councillor Hebert.
Thank you very much. And I'm assuming there's nothing with Lynn at this time.
No public comment on the phone.
Okay, thank you, thank you both, great job. So I was going to have a response to public comment and I'd like to speak to our comment to the speakers. Could please? Any councillors?
Councillor Dagwan.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to speak to Lucas and I didn't get the other young lady's name from the Youth Commission. First, I'd like to thank you for taking a stance on this issue and also thank you for taking the time to understand that, understand why we're moving in this direction, the Black Lives issues, as we strive for peaceful solutions. So thank you again for taking this issue up and taking a stance on it.
Thank you, councillor Dagwan. Councillor Brit, Beeden Bender, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I too share your thoughts regarding Lucas and Lily. Thank you so much for your involvement, for your leadership, for, for taking this on and as something that we need to address. And I made, I made some statements regarding this a couple of weeks ago at the last Town Council meeting and I can tell you that our Town Council President is working on addressing this through some committee work. So, so we are going to be addressing this as a council, if you will. So thank you again for your activism and your involvement. You are leaders now and you continue to be leaders going into the future. Regarding 5G, I, you know, I definitely share the concern of fellow residents in Centerville and I will, you know, I will be speaking with our attorney about this and seeing, seeing what can be done at this point. But I am, I'm sorry to hear about the judgment that was made and I understand your intense concern. And finally, I just want to set the record straight. Mr. Crowe made a sort of a false statement and he mentioned that I had coined his records request as repulsive and that was incorrect. If he were to go back to the tape, he would see what I was referring to was an insinuation that town councillors knew about something and then kept it quiet. That's what I was referring to as repulsive. So, so your open, your open meeting law records request is totally, totally valid in the sense that you're allowed to do that and go for it. But I just wanted to correct the record on what you had said. Thank you.
I don't see the council president.
I believe we lost him.
So any other councillors wish to respond? Councillor Bogan.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. A couple of issues. First of all, with regard to the T-Mobile site, as I've said before, that is an issue that unfortunately, despite the fact that I do know a fair amount about the subject area because it is my practice and, but because of that, I generally will recuse myself from discussions of the issue. But I will say what I've said before. I certainly understand and appreciate the sentiments that we've heard this evening. But as I think was referenced by Ms. DeFrancesco, a part of the problem is that municipal authority is extremely constrained. The FCC has preemptive authority over these issues. I have not read the court's decision, but I presume or I expect that if I did, that's largely what I'm going to find. So I appreciate the frustration, but there's, there's limited, the town has limited ability to do much. And I'll leave it at that. With regard to Lucas and Lily, thank you for your initiative. I, I won't echo the sentiments of councillors Beeden, Bender, and Dagwan other than to say, perhaps it is by virtue of the initiative taken by our youth that we will see some difference in the future. Hope springs eternal in that regard. Finally, with regard to Mr. Crowe. Finally, with regard to Mr. Crowe, I appreciate your passion. I commend you for your initiative. I'm sorry if you felt personally offended. I do agree with many of the comments that you made, and I thank you for coming forward once again. Thank you.
Any other councilors' response to public comment? Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, Vice President. I totally hear and understand the frustration that our residents have about large towers that might be emitting certain waves in their neighborhood, and that there's no way that they can challenge the positioning of those. As was stated, I'm not sure if that was Janet, I think Janet Davis, mentioned that there is an effort to build another tower on Wakeby Road in Marson's Mills. And if there's any time to put forth your comments, this is the time that you, as a private citizen, can answer public during the public comment time. That doesn't mean that the town will abdicate from any way to work through this, to limit it or to just rescale it. But I think this is the time now that if you're going to have an impact of this, this is a time to have your voice out there.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd like to move to Town Manager Communications, please. Town Manager Ells.
Good evening, Mark Ells. This is my Town Manager's Report for the period of June 5th through June 18th. And I'm going to, I submitted a report to you with an attachment, but I'm going to keep my comments tonight specific to the budget. After discussing this with leadership, I know that we have many items on the agenda. So I will begin, and Director Milne will complete a summary relevant to our approach to fiscal management in closing out fiscal year 2020 and the proposed FY '21 budget during this emergency situation. When confronted with the pandemic, the town took immediate action to control spending. Following the state of emergency declared in our Commonwealth, we implemented hiring freezes, began deferring discretionary expenses, reduced the FY '21 budget from its original operating budget, and reduced capital spending, both in what was being proposed in the FY '21 budget and looking at all projects that were currently on the books and trying to make a decision as to the need to proceed or the need to pause and await what might be a fiscal challenge. These were all necessary steps taken in order to generate reserves and to protect the town from committing to a potentially unsustainable spending plan. As you remember, we went from having a very consistent, predictable revenue model to the unknown. And unfortunately, we are still moving through an unknown recovery period. As a result of these actions and the historic, comprehensive financial leadership directed by our town council and implemented by the town manager, we've established strong reserve funding levels that allow for budgetary options going forward under these conditions. Maintaining the quality of life in our community and providing sound fiscal management is a delicate balance. The FY '21 budget proposed attempts to minimize programs and service levels, service level reductions while not becoming overly dependent on the use of reserves to provide municipal programs and services. Now I'll ask Director Milne now to get into a little bit of the detail.
Thank you, Town Manager Ells. Good evening, councilors. Director of Finance. Proposed general fund budget before this evening that you'll be taking up later on. The fiscal year 2021 is structurally balanced as presented. We're using $2.9 million of reserves to balance the budget, but we are projecting to generate over $3 million when we close fiscal year '20. So we will replenish all the reserves that we use to balance this budget. And that's in part due to the steps that we've taken to reduce spending this year and next. Our most vulnerable area in the proposed budget is the amount of local aid the town will receive from the state. Local receipts have already been reduced by $2.9 million, or 15%, from the projected fiscal year 2020 levels. And new growth in property taxes has already been reduced by 25%. But on a positive note, only 8% of our general fund budget is provided in the form of local aid from the state. So upon the final passage of the state's fiscal year 2021 budget, the potential negative impact to Barnstable in local aid reductions is comparatively less than most communities. By implementing the budgetary controls in fiscal year 2020 the Town Manager Ells just mentioned above, in maintaining appropriate reserve levels, the town has options and is prepared to respond to the current fiscal situation. We still don't understand the full extent of the financial impact of the pandemic, and we continue to proceed with caution. Without question, our community and its municipal government will need to adjust to the fiscal downturn and future economic conditions. The town of Barnstable is well positioned to manage this economic situation. The town's reserve has been created for unforeseeable economic conditions. Our fiscal policies and municipal budgeting procedures provide the town with financial options. The prudent management and the use of these reserves will allow for the continuation of high priority services and provide the necessary time to develop and evaluate a well-designed budget with tactical reductions if and where needed. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your Town Manager's Report this evening.
Thank you very much, Manager Mills. Thank you. Okay, with ask Vice, let a Vice President act on the minutes. I do want to make note to a document that we received from Mr. John Crowe. He emailed them in reference to the short-term rental material. Just let him know that that's going to be attached to the minutes.
Mr. Vice President, or excuse me, Mr. President. Mr. Crowe was present and read that document into the record.
Oh, he did. Okay.
He did, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I apologize for being cut out of the system, but I think we were overloaded or something, and so I had to reboot. So thank you for carrying on. We appreciate that. So Madam Vice President, if you would act on the minutes, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of June 4th, 2020 as presented. Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if you would take a roll call to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Counselors, Biedenbender. Bogan.
I'll vote in favor, but with all due respect to the Vice Chair, I don't believe that what Mr. Crowe read was the reason to which the president referred because it was emailed to all councilors. They are looking at it, and that's not what he read. With that, I would vote to approve the minutes.
Thank you very much.
If I could have a copy of that, I'll attach it to the minutes.
Yes, definitely I can do that. And in essence, it was not a referral to our previous minutes. As I was reading it, I realized that it was a referral to what's coming up later on in the short-term rental material. So if you want to conclude it in the minutes of this meeting, I'll just put it under the short-term rental discussion later on.
Perfect. Thank you.
I thank you.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
That's 13 yes.
Thank you very much. We're going to now open up for communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission, reports, correspondence, and announcements. Many councilors. Okay, I hope I'm not being repetitive. I think that Counselor Biedenbender may have talked about this to the young people who called in at public comment, but I just want to shout out that the Human Services Committee has accepted the challenge to address racial equity in the town of Barnstable. And I thank Counselor Biedenbender for your encouragement and participation in this important effort. Thank you very much. Any other communications? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move along. So what we'd like to do is going into old business, I would ask, we have two items that have to do with the airport. I'm sorry, maybe that's under new business. I'm going to ask that we take out of order, new business, item number 2020-190 and item number 2020-191, so that we can handle that. And Director Jervis would be free to leave. This is the only thing that she's here for. So I would ask I would ask that Counselor, who's with the airport? Who's on link to the airport?
Counselor Stein Hilber.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stein Hilber, if you could advance us to page 45 in item number 2020-190. If you could read that into the order of the day, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business. Like to refer item 2020-190 to a public hearing of July 16th, 2020. Supplemental appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $212,700. The fiscal year 2020 Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Budget as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second to refer to a public hearing, item number 2020-190 to a public hearing. This is a vote to approve that motion. Madam Clerk, if you would take that roll call, please.
Counsel, excuse me, Counselors Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Biedenbender?
Brit, you're muted.
My spacebar didn't work. Yes.
That's 13 yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Counselor Stein Hilber, if you could also read in item 2020-191.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, under new business, item 2020-191. Transfer order in the amount of $52,209 for the fiscal year 2020 Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Budget as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? This is to approve moving or any discussion on this item?
Point of order, Mr. President. I think we have Katie Service for the rationale on this item.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Hi. I'll share quickly my screen. I don't want to take up too much of everyone's time. Just in general, the airport put out to bid several projects to replace snow removal equipment. In April of 2019, the town council approved $800,000 for replacement of our heavy-duty snow blower. We did put that up to bid. We received the lowest responsive bidder, came in at $590,000, much less than what we had set aside for the piece of equipment. With that bid plus bid development and administration fees, it's about $612,000, just over $612,000. So we have an excess in that appropriation of $187,016.98. In the same respect, we have another piece of equipment that we also put out to bid about the same time. It's for replacement of a 11-foot plow with sander. The airport was approved back in April of 2019 for $230,000 for this piece of equipment. The lowest responsive bidder came in at $269,924. The bids plus bid development comes out to $282,208.26. The request tonight is to transfer funds from the excess that we had in appropriation to 19105 over to appropriation to 19106 to cover the excess amount that's needed. That's all I have for this evening. Is there any questions?
Counselors, any questions, comments? Okay.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2020-191.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a vote to approve item number 2020-191. This is a roll call, majority vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Biedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
That's unanimous, 13 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
The Council, thank you. You have a good, safe summer.
Thank you.
Counselors, if you'll indulge me, since we are already in the new business, why don't we just finish up on, since we do have Counselor Schnep with us this evening, I would like, if you would, please, read in to the orders of the day, item number 2020-192 and item number 2020-193.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a referral to a public hearing to be held on July 16th, 2020. Item number 2020-192. An order amending the general ordinances by adding Chapter 190, Short-Term Rental Properties, and amending Chapter 170, Rental Properties.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. This is for public hearing. Where am I? I'm sorry. This is for refer to a public hearing on July 16th, 2020. This is for item number 2020-192. Madam Clerk, if you would take the roll call, please.
Counselors. Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Biedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
That'll be 13 yes.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Schnep, please, if you could read into the orders of the day, item number 2020-193, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a referral to the Planning Board, item number 2020-193. Order amending Chapter 240, Zoning, Article 2, Section 7, adding certain provisions pertaining to short-term rentals.
Second.
Thank you very much. And we have a first and a second. I would entertain a vote for the approval of item number 2020-193 to refer to the Planning Board. I would entertain a vote for the approval of item number 2020-193 to refer to the planning board. Madam Clerk, this is your roll call, please.
Councillors, Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
13 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And the reason, thank you very much, Councillor Schnep, for being with us this evening. And we'll keep your mom and our thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much for being with us tonight. If we could, please, while we're here, why don't we finish up on this old business? We have, we're supposed to have a public hearing on item number 2020-185. I'm going to ask Councillor Dagwone to please read this into the orders of the night to move it to continue to our next meeting. Right now it's scheduled for June 25th. Do you do that for me, please, Councillor Dagwone?
Could you tell me what item you're talking about right now? Because you went to old business.
Yeah, it's on page 31. And it's item number 2020-185 on page 31. I'm sorry, I know it's been on order, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to a public hearing on the 6/25/2020, item number 2020-185, authorizing the town manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the town of Barnstable and the Airway U LCC.
Second.
Thank you very, very much. We have a first and a second to move to continue. Item number 2020-185. I'm going to take a vote. Madam Clerk, if you take that roll call, please.
Councillors. Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr. Steinheilber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
That's 13 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I know that I just did to you what I said I would never do, and that's take things out of order and mess you up. And I'm very, very sorry. Okay, so now we are going to go into our our old business. And we're going to start with the school department continuing our discussion from our last meeting. That's item number 2020-146. That's found on page 6 of your packet. Would Councillor Beedenbender, please read that into the orders of the day. Item number 2020-146.
Yes, thank you, President Hebert. This is old business. This is item number 2020-146. This is for public hearing and a roll call, majority vote. This is an appropriation order in the amount of $71,405,234 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Barnstable Public Schools Budget as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. I'm going to reopen a public hearing on this. If there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item, let's see if we have anybody in queue. Sarah, do you have anybody in queue for this?
No one on Zoom for public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. Same with you, Lynn.
No one on the phone, thank you.
I thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to now open this up. Do we have this, anyone from the school department? Our superintendent is with us. If you'd like to speak to us again, that'd be great.
Mr. President, I do see Councillor Neary with his hand raised.
Okay, hold, if you would, Superintendent. Councillor Neary, did you want to speak?
As a point of order, is there, there's no one from the school department who wished to speak prior to me at this point? Or I didn't know whether someone was there, so I'll sit.
Okay, yeah, the superintendent is here to speak.
Would you like to speak first, or?
I think that might be helpful.
Thank you. May I proceed, President Hebert?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hebert, Vice President Rap Grissette, and members of the town council. I appreciate your time this evening and would ask if I could just highlight a few areas that I think came up during our last conversation. And then throughout the past two weeks, Sarah has just a brief PowerPoint presentation, just so we can highlight the points. And I would ask that Gareth Markwell join me. Next to the next slide. Thank you. So I just wanted to be able to refocus and reframe our budget priorities for fiscal year 2021 as approved by the school committee. Three major priorities, as we talk about tonight. And that certainly is expanding our academic, social, and emotional learning by increasing direct services to students. And I'm going to continue to focus on the language of direct services. As we start to gain additional information out of the state, the Commissioner of Education's Office and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it is very likely that we will be asked to safely reopen schools on August 31st to bring back as many students as possible as soon as possible to in-person learning. And as a result of our school closure from March 13th to today, which was the last day of school, we know that we will need to implement long-term educational recovery efforts for the learning loss that most likely occurred for many of our students over that three-month period. Next slide, please, Sarah. Thank you. And I just, again, want to take the opportunity. We are the largest district on the Cape. We serve over 5,000 students. Over 1,900 of our students are considered economically disadvantaged. We have 873 students with disabilities. 647 of our students are learning English. And all combined, we have 2,745 students who are considered high needs. Now, high needs is a definition that is used by the Massachusetts Department of Education, which indicates that a student could be in one or more of these categories, indicating that they are high needs and require a higher level of service as a result. Next slide, please. In the school committee's level service budget, they have reallocated full-time equivalents or positions to provide direct services to students. So the school committee's goal is to increase the amount of direct services to students through, particularly through special education and English language learners. So that was something that we did through the budget. They also reduced $245,000 from operating expenses. And we reorganized our Crossroads Program, which is a program serving students with disabilities to an in-house model versus a contractual model and had some cost savings and efficiencies there as well. Next slide, please. What we didn't talk about two weeks ago, and again, as more, as reopening becomes more of a reality for us, the long-term educational recovery efforts that will be required for so many of our students. There's some emerging research coming out to help educators understand the significance of school closure across the country for three months. And I've just attached there a couple of quotes from a study that I've cited on the bottom of the slide to suggest that students are likely to return in the fall with approximately 63% to 68% of the learning gains in reading relative to a typical school year and with 37% to 50% of learning gains in math. Using the Hurricane Katrina and other extended absences, the researchers noted that students from that incident took nearly two full years to make up lost ground from the loss. And they also suggest that students who are in the top third would certainly be making greater gains than other students. And the final note there is COVID is expected to add a 20% gap between the highest and lowest performing students. And one of the school committee's goals, since I've been in the district, is to reduce the current achievement gaps that we have among our subgroups. When you look at Barnstable's achievement levels, we look very much like the state in the aggregate. When you start to peel back how our students are doing in what the state terms as subgroup, so how are our students with disabilities? How are English language learner students designated as economically disadvantaged? How are they performing? They were performing with a very large gap in between, well, it looks like in the aggregate and the performance of those subgroups. Over the past four years, we have closed many of those gaps and will continue to work on closing those gaps. However, we can't lose sight of the impact of closing school buildings from March 13th in terms of what that will have on many, many of our students. Next slide, please. So when, in all likelihood, again, based on some early information that superintendents are receiving, school districts will be required to open for the fall in a model that combines face-to-face learning and remote learning. Today, we released a survey to all of our families. And when I last checked, a few minutes ago, we had 500 responses in because we wanted to find out from our families a couple of things. How did remote learning go? What is your level of satisfaction with it? What suggestions do you have for us in terms of improving it from your perspective as a family or a parent? Also, we wanted to ask to get a sense from our families. Were they looking to return to school? Were they looking for more remote learning? What were their expectations for the fall? So we have some of that information coming in. And Councillor Cullen, this is Modern Teacher. I put this with respect to your questions about remote learning and how is the district going to improve the remote learning experience for our students? Barnstable has joined a number of other Cape districts through the Cape Cod Collaborative to join the Modern Teacher platform. This is a professional development where our teachers will understand, go through professional development to understand best practices of remote learning, design high-quality remote learning, and manage high-quality remote learning as well. Next slide, please. So, and again, as more information comes out from the state, we understand that the expectation from the commissioner is that all districts across the Commonwealth purchase enough PPE for three months. We've done our analysis based on state safety guidelines, and the first three months will come at an expense of $320,000. We also know that there will be expectations from the state and certainly from our community that we have additional cleaning and disinfecting in our schools as we reopen. I included there a picture of what a bus may very well look like, given physical distancing requirements. So there will be impacts to our transportation. We know we will need some more technology for hybrid learning. And there's a picture there of what physical distancing in a classroom may look like. Next slide, please. In the school committee's approved budget that was forwarded to the town council for consideration, I just, again, wanted to capture what the new expenses were. Our out-of-district tuition line has increased by over $440,000 for a total line item of $4.5 million. This is for out-of-district placements for students with significant disabilities. We've also expanded our NEC program. And our NEC program serves children with autism. Our bus transportation contract has gone up as scheduled. And we do have contractual increases of $1.5 million. The majority of those increases include, if you can think of a salary schedule for a teacher or for, and for others that are in bargaining units, as they move across, as they gain another year of experience and as they gain additional education, their salary increases. Next slide. And Gareth, I would ask you, this is difficult to see, I'm sure, but just to review this.
Good evening. So again, our proposed budget is $74,196,256, an increase of just over $1.6 million or 2.24%. We are looking for a total appropriation of $70,454, sorry, $70,000, $70,454,703 or a 1.81% increase in general fund appropriation and additional $950,531 in the schools, from the school savings or reserves. We'll be offsetting the budget with approximately $1.8 million from Circuit Breaker. We will offset with $225,000 in transportation fees and $750,000 in school choice income. So again, a total increase of just over $1.6 million or 2.24% over fiscal year 20. Just a quick look at the history of our school savings account. Over the last 10 years, we've averaged a return of, return to the school savings account an average of just over $2 million. We have put into the capital trust funds in fiscal year 13, $4 million. Fiscal year 16, $2 million. And fiscal year 18, $4 million. We have had limited use of our reserves during this time. We utilized just over 600, sorry, $750,000 in FY '20, which includes $150,000 for unemployment insurance. And we'll be looking to, for our operating budget, a supplement of just over $950,000 in FY '21. Our internal preliminary estimates for money or returned appropriations from school operating budgets in FY '20, we're putting right around $1 million at this point, plus any revenue from excess revenue, any income from excess revenues or the fixed cost categories. So we are, in fact, replenishing what we've been taking out historically. And we'll be in good shape going into FY '21 and '22 at this point.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'm going to now open it up to all councillors for questions. And with due respect, we're going to start with Councillor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Superintendent Neil Brown, and also Assistant Director Gareth Markwell. I move to amend order number 2020-146 by striking $71,405,234 and inserting in its place $70,800, sorry, excuse me, striking $71,405,234. place $70,008, sorry, excuse me, striking $71,405,234 and inserting in its place $70,850,919 and by striking $950,531 and inserting in its place $396,216.
Second.
Okay, we're going to open this up to, we have a first and a second on this amendment. So I'd like to go into discussion on the amendment as put forward by Councilman Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Heber. First of all, I want to thank all of the people in town that reached out to me to support the school department's proposed budget. There were many, many of them, which included Laura, Tori, Emily, Jay, Stephanie, Barbara, and Keith. Although opinions may differ, I want, I want to say that involvement in department, school departments, and in town are really the key for more transparent government. Although I would prefer greater reductions to the budget, however, the extra two weeks have afforded me the opportunity to kind of dig deeper into the budgetary needs required by the school department. I'd like to thank Director Mill and also Assistant Director Markwell for taking the time granting me the education and how budgets work in regards to the school department and helping walk me through the proposed budget. With that said, the proposed budget represents an increase of roughly 2.3% over the current 2020. And my concern with rising budgets are not about the individual departments in town, but the ultimate effects spending has on the taxpayer and property owner. This is really the rationale for my proposed amendment to the budget. We find ourselves in really uncertain times, and we cannot know today what the effects of the pandemic will have on the town's revenues. We heard from Town Manager Lels, this is, we've talked about it's unprecedented, and I think that that's really an understatement. For these reasons, I propose an amendment to the school department's proposed budget from a 2.3% increase to a 1.5% increase year-over-year. This funding will provide our school administration the funding to maintain educational staff, I'm hoping, as well as current school programs, as they successfully did in fiscal year 2020. Finally, for the conversations I had, not only with Director Markwell, but Director Mill, you know, I really want to wish our educators the best as they move into this new era where they need to really realign their teaching skills and how our new educational environment will operate. Many of us have had children at home, some of us maybe had jobs that ended. So we're trying to balance the education of our children at the same time, you know, trying to put money on the table. That's really where my thoughts have fallen in terms of, you know, continued budgetary increases. I hope you'll support the amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilman Neary. Other councilors, and you may also direct any question to the superintendent. If you want to ask a question or comment through the superintendent, that's fine. Councilor Bogan, please. Councilor Bogan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, it's a question directed to Mr. Neary. I got the substituted $17 million number, the other number that was the reduction from the $95531 to $300 and some, I missed that one. But the global question is, what was the rationale for both of those adjustments?
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Bogan. Again, we've looked at not only, this is not to single out any particular department. It's really this onward march with budgetary numbers that ultimately fall on the taxpayer and primarily on the property owners. You know, we talk about Proposition 2 and 1/2, I think when it originally came out, that was kind of a cap, but now 2 and 1/2 is an every-year occurrence, right? So it's the onward march where funding town operations ultimately gets directed towards the taxpayer. And we cannot today determine where revenues are going to fall. And with that in mind, should we have a remarkable recovery, which I certainly hope we do, these items or additional funding requests can always be brought up at a later date. But essentially fiscal year 2020 ends in a few days, and we're now setting the table going forward into '21. So do we load our expense budget up in the hopes that things will improve? I think we're better off always being cautious. And, you know, fortunately, not only in the school department, but in the operations of our town's finances, we have always tried to plan for these things. But again, I mean, we're hearing in towns all around us of furloughing and cuts with staff and people. And we were able to make the numbers work last year. This proposal still increases year-over-year spend. My hope is that our programs, our staffing can still fall under that type of a number. It's basically a percentage change. There's not really a monetary effect on it, other than I think we need to, as stewards of the other constituents in the town, the people that were up here for, it's their money, you know? We're spending other people's money. And I think that's really what drives my thoughts behind the whole proposal. I hope that helps.
I understand the rationale, and I apologize for belaboring it. I'm just trying to understand, how did you get the numbers?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about the physical numbers. So if you take the original budget and just apply reductions on those original numbers by 1.5%, I hope the math is correct.
Okay.
That's it. It's just, it's just a percentage is all it is. The two-point, just under 2.3 down to 1.5.
One further question, and this may be for Mr. Mill, and I apologize, but I seem to recall from the last meeting that with this increase, this is the only department that will be afforded an increase? Is my recollection correct?
Mark Mill, Finance Director. There are other departments that will have increases as well. If you go through the budget book, there are a couple of other departments with increases.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had nothing further.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Councilor Clark.
Councilor Star, please. Councilor Star.
Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much, Council President. I thank all those who contacted me to help me understand as best as possible the issues with this whole budget for our Barnstable Public Schools. I do not take this vote lightly. I support the children of our beloved Barnstable. Our future depends on them. I also understand that there are sobering challenges in the operation of our school department, especially during these challenging times dealing with the COVID pandemic. That said, I have received feedback from my constituents challenging the high salary and benefits package of our Barnstable Public School Superintendent Dr. Mayo Brown, as well as her management style. I have heard that the school department is top-heavy with administrative expenses and that the current budget does not show the fiscal restraint that the town services side of our budget has shown. In the memorandum that the town councilors received this past Wednesday, Dr. Mayo Brown wrote, quote, "At no time was the school committee or superintendent advised or directed to lower its request to lessen the agreed-upon revenue-sharing agreement," unquote. "With all due respect, as a top administrator for our school system, did Dr. Mayo Brown not envision that a town is facing a serious financial strain that will likely endure over the next few years, and that she is not cognizant of this issue to make modifications to the budget without being, quote, 'advised or directed,' unquote? I respectfully suggest that the school superintendent lead by example. If we are truly here for the children, then consider redirecting some of the school administration's funds towards the teachers and direct expenses that provide for our kids. Please don't trim the Barnstable Public School budget that affects those least paid in our school system. I trust that Dr. Mayo Brown is a talented and resourceful professional. She has done a spectacular job in negotiating her contracts in the past. It shows that she has the intellect to figure out a better solution for our budget, especially in this challenging economic climate, when so many of our residents are losing their jobs and many of our businesses are strained or going out of business. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Councilor Clark and our Councilor Star, please.
Oh, good evening. Thank you. I had a question for Mr. Neary. You said that there would be, your proposal is an increase of 1.5%?
Yes, that is, that's correct. It's not a decrease. It's an increase year-over-year, yes.
But that's, but you're cutting $1 million from the budget?
Uh...
You didn't give us a total number.
Well, do some quick math here.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers.
Do you?
It's 554,315.
Point of information, Mr. President, maybe Director Mill can speak to the numbers a little bit more effectively on the amendment or proposal.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Mill, Director of Finance. Yes, the proposed amendment reduces the requested appropriation by $554,315.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was an added number of reserve, you were reducing the reserve, use of reserves?
Yes, the reduction in the appropriation is equivalent to the reduction from the reserve to fund the budget.
I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's much clearer. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to ask the superintendent, if she, you've been mentioned by name here, would you care to respond to any, any of this discussion? Superintendent, please.
I would, President Heber. Thank you very much for the opportunity. To Councilor Clark's comments about being cognizant whether or not we needed to reduce our budget, I would respond that there is a revenue-sharing agreement between the town manager and myself that the school committee uses. The school committee initially created a budget with a 60-40 split that was provided to them in January. They realigned and readjusted their budget when town revenues were projected to be lowered. Therefore, the 60% was lowered. And the school committee is, as their fiduciary responsibility, lowered their budget accordingly. So, and, and in the general comments about reserves, so the school committee has what is referred to commonly as a savings account. And we showed that savings account on the last slide as a way to show how the savings account has been accessed over the past number of years. Time and time again, the school committee is told that the reserves are there for a rainy day. The reserves are there to maintain a level service for the children of Barnstable. They are using those reserves to maintain level service, or that is their request, is to use the reserves that they have been told time and time again are theirs to use to, for their budget, subject to town council approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. I want to recognize Councilor Rapacecki, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to also thank everyone that reached out to the council and made comment. I will clarify, though, that most of the comments that I received requested that the council level fund the budget, which was a little surprising because level funding is quite different than level service budget. So just to be clear, I think what the superintendent has put forward is a level service budget. If a level funded budget were to come in, it would be considerably lower, and it would be at more at under $70 million. Ver point of information. The, a couple of questions, but first I, I do want to make a statement. I've served on the council for close to 10 years, and I think at every budget, maybe my first couple I didn't speak up, but I have spoken up about the revenue-sharing agreement. And I think it is high time that the town and the schools come together and discuss that revenue sharing. And I think that discussion should begin with our strategic planning session in September. And, you know, it's one thing for the school committee and the council to come together in January and make a presentation, albeit it really is more for show, I say, than actually getting anything accomplished. Because by January, the budget has been developed and is ready to be put forward. Now is the time in September, before the budgets get developed, that that discussion should take place. And I'm going to recommend that the president invite the school committee to a portion of our strategic planning session for those discussions. I, I do have a question, a couple of questions about students leaving the district. Not only have I seen over the years the students leaving this district, and I know the population is, you know, decreasing, and it has been for a decade, but will you still be able to leave the district or do school choice going forward in the fall, Superintendent?
Yes, Counselor, the school committee voted, as they must annually, to continue to be a district of choice.
So with the pandemic and that still going to be allowed for students to partake in the school choice?
At this point in time, yes. As the reopening guidance and technical assistance and expectations comes from the state, I may ask the school committee to take another look at that, but as we, as we are here today, it continues.
A couple other things. I believe you received monies for the, from the CARES Act. And if you could just, maybe Gareth can just refresh us how much you received, what you've spent on that, because I know you've highlighted in the memo which we received, and thank you for that, that the initial order for three months of personal protection equipment is close to $320,000. Will you be able to use some of that CARES money towards that, or what have you spent so far?
So the CARES Act from the Department of Education for Barnstables, based on the IDA and Title I grant formula, Barnstables allotments, or Barnstable School District's allotment for that CARES Act is approximately $774,000. We do need to share that proportionally with private schools that reside within Barnstable. Our estimate per the formula brings the number down to about $600,000 that's available for the school system. At this point, the PPE costs that have been identified for the fall, the logical place would be to use that CARE... the logical place would be to use that CARES Act funds for that purpose. In addition to that, we are working through steering committees over the last few weeks in the plans of reopening, to develop the plans for reopening. Some of the early items that are being identified are obviously costs associated with custodial, employment in the fall, additional support there. We will likely see some increase in expenses for transportation, probably through adjusted CARES, and then additional technology requests. I would urge that a $600,000 grant in this environment will not be stretched very far when you're looking at some of these opening costs.
Thank you, that's all I have for the vote, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, appreciate that. Any other councillors' comments?
Councillor Steinheber.
Councillor Steinheber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things I just wanted to kind of clarify. There were some numbers being thrown around, but I was just doing some quick back-of-the-envelope here. So, last year, we appropriated roughly $69.8 million. This year, the requested appropriation is $71.4 million. So, that's an increase of 2.3% over last year, roughly about $1.6 million. So, in the amendment that was proposed, this is basically shaving roughly 3/4 of a percent off of that increase. It's still a 1.5% increase roughly over last year's funding and it's still, you know, over $1 million in increased funding. So, I think I got that math right. I just wanted to kind of clarify that year over year. One thing I want to say, you know, in the last two weeks, you know, this council did vote to move this discussion forward to tonight's meeting. You know, since that time, there's certainly been comments made on social media and other venues, you know, saying the council doesn't care about kids. And I just want to say how foolish that is. You have a council full of parents, grandparents in some cases. You have parents here that have multiple kids in the school system. You have youth mentors, youth coaches. A number of us are involved in children's charities. So, to drag that kind of tired old trope out and that talking point is just unimaginative, it's unintelligent, and we're just better as a community. So, to say that the council doesn't care about kids is really complete foolishness. So, it did, in some respects, seem kind of orchestrated on social media, but I just wanted to say that. I appreciate the clarification on the extra PPE, the CARES funds, which are over and above the budget. That's good to know that there are some fundings there to cover that. In the fiscal responsibility piece, obviously, a number of departments are cutting back. I'm also on the board of the Mass Municipal Association. And there's a lot of unknowns out there that we're not going to know for some time. You know, state revenue was down about 16% in May alone. We really don't know what local aid's going to be, what the cut's going to be. It won't for some time. So, I do think it makes a lot of sense to be as conservative as we possibly can right now. One of the great things about a council form of government is you can have two meetings and add funds back if the fiscal situation warrants, and we're certainly all hoping for that. But it is just as equally possible that we're in a worse situation for fiscal '21, I mean, for fiscal '22 than we find ourselves in here at the moment. So, I would say saving as much into reserves going forward is the prudent thing to do. This motion does do that. And I also want to say, I think these last two weeks, a lot of us have learned quite a bit about the structure of the school budget. I think the recent movement to be a little bit more cohesive, starting, you know, as soon as we can with the school committee and having a robust discussion at the strategic level is very important. Myself and councillor Vivek serve as school committee liaisons. I think it's important to have due diligence on budgets. And speaking with some of the school committee members, I know that, you know, they expressed to me that they received the budget about two days before they were expected to vote on it. They had wanted to have another meeting to discuss it, perhaps talk about some changes. But I think there was a misinterpretation of the budget calendar, as expressed by those members to me, and they went ahead and just voted on it, even though they wished they had more time to review it. It was not a unanimous vote either, it was a 4-1 vote. But what I got from the school committee is that they wish they had had at least another meeting to kind of look this over. So, in the future, I don't want to see budgets rushed just because they're there. We're not here to rubber-stamp budgets. We're here to do our due diligence, to understand them, understand the construction, and think of it in the big picture, because we're all one town. The school department is just that, it's a department of the town. But it does have our largest budget. So, I appreciate the motion and I will be supporting it.
Thank you, councillor Steinheber. Councillor Beedenbender, I believe you are next. Councillor Beedenbender?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. You know, this is a level service budget and we are in unprecedented times. And there are additional increases such as bus transportation contracts, you know, out-of-district tuitions increased, that factor into this. And it is within the 60-40 split. So, I am actually going to be supporting this budget as it is being presented. What I will say, though, is that I do fully support councillor Rap Grissette's comments, and they were comments I was going to make myself, and it just goes more to the bigger issue of that 60-40 split and transparency. And the reason why that split has worked up until this time is that there has been trust between the town council and the school committee. And if that trust is shaken, for whatever reason, it does make us question some of those decisions. And I do think it's important not to conflate two issues. One is the school budget as proposed versus school committee decisions, you know, the mention of top-heavy admin costs, that kind of thing. And I think we deal with that at strategic planning in conversations with the school committee, and we address those concerns there. But I feel that, given the nature of our times right now and given what our children need, a level service budget is reasonable. But I do think that there are larger issues that we need to address and we should take them up during strategic planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Cullum.
Okay, Cullum, please.
Thank you. Yes, a few comments to make, probably shock. But first of all, thank you for Dr. Meg Mayo Brown, for, you know, noting that you were responding to me specifically, because these are concerns I've had for a really long time, and I do appreciate that. Maybe councillor Dagwon can mute your phone and give back. Councillor Dagwon, could you mute your phone? Thank you. So, I guess, you know, I did see a lot of the stuff on social media and I did respond to it and had many, many conversations that I thought were very productive. Although we didn't agree on everything, we did agree on the one thing that I think is the most important thing, which is that we all want the most opportunities we can provide for our children in the Barnstable school system. And I know we all agree on that. Everyone on the screen agrees on that. Everyone in the BTA agrees on that. Everyone in the teachers' union agrees on that. So, I think if that is our guiding light and guiding principle moving forward, when we have these discussions in the strategic planning session, which, you know, really does need to happen, I think we'll find that we agree on 95% of everything. I was shocked to be included in all the public statements of people who didn't want to fund the budget. That's not what I'm saying. I'll give you more money. I would vote to give you more money today if I saw a vision for Barnstable and an opportunity to bring more kids into our district, to stop the bleeding on people jumping ship. That's what I'm talking about. And, you know, when we talk about, from the municipal side, we are AAA bond rating because we see the state standards and we see them as a floor, not the ceiling. And I think one of the things I'm going to look to do in September is to make sure we're all on the same page about making Barnstable excellent across the board, where we have a vision that goes far beyond Dr. Meg Mayo Brown, that goes far beyond that. But what is your contribution to us getting there? Where we are full, we are full, and people are dying to come to Barnstable. People aren't leaving in the 67 building. And, you know, to councillor Rap Grissette's point, I mean, we were elected the same year. Ever since then, I have been hearing on the council of people leaving Barnstable, decreasing enrollment. Yes, some people are relocating, I get that. But a lot of kids are going to NOSC. A lot of kids are going to private school. A lot of kids are going to charter schools. And I don't believe that we're out there recapturing the student body that we could recapture. And I see this because of COVID, because of the major fallout. And I think this may just be because I'm a salesperson and kind of a buzzard at heart, you know, that it's an opportunity to pick up on other people's failures. It's an opportunity for us to really shine. And I appreciate a collaborative effort with all of Cape Cod. But Barnstable should be first. We are first in the municipal side of things. We should be first in the education side of things. And that's why I think foresee should be spruced up, because we are the city and we should be first. Collaborative effort, yes, but people should be following our lead. We should be trailblazing this. And, you know, if there isn't a vision and there isn't a desire for this, and there isn't a hunger for it or an appetite, I don't know what to say. But I really, I really believe we have such a huge opportunity to push it forward. And I do thank you for emailing me this afternoon. I'm sorry I was busy at the end of the day and couldn't get to you in time. I do appreciate you mentioning that you were responding to me specifically. But I think if we all agree on that one premise, that the kids are first, then we can get somewhere. And I'd like to also mention that this board, the school committee enjoys a certain level of immunity because they're not the ones that actually put their name on this. They're not the ones who pass the money. They already have it, they just divvy it up. But we take the heat because we're looking out for everybody. And as a mom of a kid in sixth grade going into seventh, if this happens again in seventh grade, my son will not be ready for eighth grade, which doesn't put him in an Ivy League school. And that's not what I'm looking for. So, I think most people that are like-minded with wanting the best education and the best opportunities for their kids want vision from the corner office in the school administration building. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Cullum, thank you very much. Councillor Snap, please.
You're muted, Paula.
I couldn't agree more with councillor Cullum's desire for us to have this vision that really elevates not only our students but the entire community. I know that we have lots of challenges in this town in terms of our demographics. And so, I know it's a struggle to, you know, to try to take that vision and bring everyone along. And I've really appreciated the superintendent's commitment that this is all for one, you know, the way forward. You know, it's, there's not something where we're going to just specialize and make sure our top kids get the best and we leave everyone behind. But that being said, I think that I would like to see in future conversations and reports, more information on outcomes. I feel like a lot of the presentations we get are on inputs and outputs. You know, we got this many people and we see the test scores, but I'd really like to see what we're planning to do to move the needle so that people, you know, that those numbers change. And maybe those are all embedded in some of the plans, educational plans that you have. But to translate that for a general audience, for us to get excited about how we know that the dollars we spend really make a difference would be great. And I think our strategic planning process in the fall can be an opportunity for, you know, starting that conversation. In terms of the budget, I, you know, am definitely open to the thought of a little trim here and there. But in this particular case with COVID, I have, you know, watched certain programs, interviews, where, you know, high-level educators and medical people are really talking about the impact of COVID on our educational system. It's going to cost more money to educate our kids next year, not less, more money. And so, I'm going to be in favor of the budget as presented, but I will definitely want a lot of support if there's any supplemental appropriation, you know, to fill any gaps that we have, you know, because of COVID. So, that's how I'm going to move forward on this particular item.
Thank you, councillor Snap. Superintendent, do you want to respond to any of the comments made by the councillors at this point?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I assure all the councillors that it is already in work.
Councillor Dagwon has a comment.
Councillor Dagwon, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Superintendent Brown, I want to thank you for your service and taking on this challenge and being here. When we met the last time and discussed this budget, I was totally in favor of being a school committee member at one point for six years. I understand the school budget. I was part of the school committee that began the transparency as councillor Beedenbender talked about, how there was no transparency between the finances with the school and with the town. And our school committee changed that so that there was better communications. So, I'm really happy that we're going to do the strategic planning. I'm so happy that our council president's going to do that, invite the school committee in, because I think, we don't know, a lot of people don't know a lot about the school system and, you know, you come once a year and we get a little presentation. But at the same time, I have no problem with us looking closely at the reserve. However, my main concern is the children, that was also. And I'm concerned about the 60-40 split that we've had between the town. The school committee gets 60% of our revenue and the town takes 40%. We've had such a quality educational system. I don't want to see that reduced. And part of the reason I see that is because we have a certain breaker that's continuing to grow. These are children, we especially need to be prepared for that. But I did want to ask you about when and where.
You're really breaking up, Deborah, I can't really understand.
I wanted to initiate the remote learning best practices from this program. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm talking about, to the superintendent, about the remote learning best one program. And I'm wondering where, when and where are the teachers going to get some training? That's a big issue right now. And we want the best practices for teachers who know nothing about, like a lot of us, Zoom meetings and best practices and having to do that for the first time, do remote teaching. And I would have liked to have a little bit more response about how that worked out, from the students, from the parents, and particularly from the superintendent. How did the remote learning go? And when are we going to start initiatives about remote learning?
Thank you, councillor Brown. Superintendent, would you like to respond to that?
I would. I'm not sure that I, I think I got the gist of the question, not all of it. But I think the gist of the question is, what is the training around remote learning? And sort of what are the results? What did students and parents think of remote learning, if I have that correct? So, the survey that we, we did a survey at the end of April and I spoke a little bit about that survey results when we met on June 4th. I can certainly forward the report from the April survey. Today's survey that went out to all families is not as many questions, but really seeks to understand what parents or families, sort of their satisfaction level with our remote learning, as well as what suggestions or feedback they have for us, which is an open-ended question. Again, when I checked before the meeting started, we had 500 parents respond to the survey. We'll keep it open. We'll use those survey results to... Um, we'll use those survey results to inform our remote learning plan. You know, it's very interesting to see some of the parent feedback. Some of the parents would like al- almost as if it were school online, regularly scheduled classes that students need to log into at a particular time and start uh and start their learning. Other parents had um different ideas. So again, we we want to take a few days to keep the survey open and see what that's um, what what those results and feedback um are for us. Our teachers, our educators, since March thirteenth have learned a great deal. It has been on the job training for them. As I mentioned in our last meeting, our teachers didn't go to school to become distance learner educators or in, you know, or to teach through remote learning. They have gone through their own um, you know, sort of trial and error in terms of what works best with particular groups of students that they were working with. Some of our educators used Google Classroom, others use Zoom. And I think some of the feedback I saw from parents today was, could we please pick one platform to use? It might be easier for families um to navigate if we need to do remote learning um in the fall. The modern teacher platform and um is professional development that our educators will be able to um sort of be self directed and self pay pace through. It offers, um, if we're familiar with the term, micro certification in remote learning. That's why we were interested in the program because our educators could actually receive certification in distance learning. There's no doubt that we're going to have to continue remote learning or some sort of, some sort of distance learning. We do want to be prepared should it ever happen again where we need to close our schools. Um, unfortunately, what we're trying to say to some of the kids, there may may no longer be a need for snow days if we're really good at remote learning and distance learning. So Counsel, I hope that answers your question. Again, I didn't get all of it. I didn't, I don't think I heard all of it. But if there's anything else you'd like me to add, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Superintendent. Counselor Steinheber.
Mr. President, I'd move that we vote on the proposed amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. So I want to be emphatic that we will be having much more inter- interrelations with the school committee. And with that being said, besides the strategic plan, that being said, I will entertain a motion to take a uh vote on the amendment as uh presented by Counselor Neary. Uh, could we get? Do we need to clarify that amendment? Anymore?
Madam Clerk wants to be recognized.
Madam Clerk.
I'm trying to get back in. I hate when this happens to me.
My question is, did we open this to a public hearing?
Yes.
Have we closed the public hearing yet?
Yes. What we're doing is, uh, once, once the uh item goes for discussion on the council, the public hearing is closed, John.
Okay, so Ma- Madam Clerk, do you have the the uh wording on this amendment proposal?
Yes, I do. One second. Yeah. Do you want me to read it to you or are we just going to go forward?
If you wish, uh, if you could, please, I would appreciate it. We've been discussing this for some time. People may have forgotten what it is that we're proposing.
The motion was made and seconded to amend order number twenty twenty dash one four six by striking seventy one million, four hundred five thousand, two hundred thirty four dollars and inserting in its place seventy million, eight hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars and by striking nine hundred fifty five hundred thirty one dollars and inserting in its place three hundred ninety six two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now, we will now take a vote uh on the amendment to item number twenty twenty dash one four six. Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call for us, please.
Certainly. Counselors, Hebert.
Very symbolically, no.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
No.
Shaughnessy.
No.
Starr.
No.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
No.
Bogan.
No.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
No.
Dagwan.
No.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
The no's have it. Eight no's. They have it.
Mr. President, I'd like you to make the motion that we vote on item twenty twenty one four six as written. Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. This is a vote. Does someone have a question? Thank you very much. Uh, this is to take a vote for item number twenty twenty dash one four six appropriation order on the Barnstable School Department as written. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors. Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
No.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
No.
Be- Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
Cullum.
No.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
No.
Hebert.
Yes.
Eight yes. Five no. We have to have a, what we have to have here?
It's majority.
Majority. Yeah, the majority has it. So it passes.
Okay, the measure twenty twenty dash one four six passes. Thank you very, very much, Counselors. Congratulations on a fine discussion, fine debate, fine work. Thank you very, very much. Very proud of your work. Madam, uh, Madam Superintendent, thank you for joining us. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mockwell, for being with us. And um, thank you for all who contributed to this fine discussion.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Counselors, you have been awesome. We have been at this now for two hours. We are going to take right now a five minute break. Please try to come back. It is exactly nine o'clock. Uh, we're going to start again at nine oh five. Please, uh, Chief Chair Croft, please. Thank you.
Yes, I think that's what I did. All right, councilors, here we go. Snap. Shaughnessy. Starr. Stein Hilbert. Heeden Bender. O'Leary. Clark. Oh. Dagwone. Here. Rap Grissette. Hebert. Leveque.
Here.
Up for him.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Parkell, manager of the board. Leading now a budget for municipal work, which therefore now our schools and departments into this budget, uh, of all general funding and enterprise. That's why we're all connected to this thing. Um, of course, here we get a little bit of all of our very private finance. We have a lot of people being much harder. I'm trying to find if we don't have anything to say. I guess this is a time to talk about the project. Let's look at this budget for a budget reduction, not a level service budget. So what you will hear presented to you in, in the coming presentations of our departments, um, on the general fund side of this is a two and a half percent reduction. This also has a corresponding program and service reduction. The enterprise funds vary based on the services provided and the assets that they are challenged to manage. Many cases those are regulatory, um, and, uh, we have a little bit different budgetary approach there. But to answer that question, overall, general fund municipal services are proposed at a minus 2.2% for FY '21. Thank you.
Thank you very much, town manager, for that information. Uh, we can note that councillor Shaughnessy has joined us, so we have, uh, all thirteen councillors present. Thank you very much. Councillors, what we'll be doing is going back right now, generally going down by precinct numbers. So, um, councillor Bogan's going to be next, followed by councillor Neary, councillor Dagwone, councillor Shaughnessy, councillor Leveque, councillor Clark. So just to give you a notice that that's how we're going to be going down this, this budget. Thank you very much. That being said, I'm going to ask councillor Bogan to kindly read into, um, the orders of the day, item number 2020-147, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, item number 2020-147 is old business, uh, public hearing that may be passed on a roll call majority. It is for the appropriation in the amount of fourteen million eight hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Barnstable Police Department budget as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. This is, uh, open for a public hearing. Do you have anyone to speak on the public?
We have Chief Sonnenbend to do the rationale.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Sonnenbend, for the rationale. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councillors. Um, I'm here with Ann Spillane to assist me through the police department budget for the twenty-one, 2021 fiscal year, and Sarah Bill will pull up a PowerPoint for me so you can see what we're talking about. Uh, this PowerPoint's going to be a little different than the one we usually present. It is much more brief, uh, so you can just see what we're talking about this year. All right, Sarah, you go to the next slide, please. All right, this year for the fiscal year 2021 Police Department Budget, here is a budget comparison. Last year in fiscal year 20, our budget was fifteen million four hundred and nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The FY '21 budget we are proposing is fourteen million eight hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which is a difference of six hundred thousand six hundred and thirty dollars for three point nine percent decrease over last, from last year's budget. Sarah, you go to the next slide, please. The proposed reductions or the proposed areas of reductions are, there's a 911 grant offset in the amount of two hundred, three, two hundred thousand dollars that we get from the state, so that's being backed out. Uh, we are deferring the hiring of four police officers in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. We are proposing to close the West Villages substation, savings an amount of eighteen thousand ninety-six dollars. And we are proposing, the town is moving from a, uh, a fixed gasoline, um, this year to a more of an open market purchase, which is perspective, which is projected to save about fifty-two thousand dollars out of our budget this year. Sarah, you go to the next budget, next slide, please. And here is the areas we are requesting funding for this year. For contractual salary increases, thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Training costs in the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And this is a mix of the overtime required and the fees for the classes that officers will need to attend to maintain their certifications and state mandated training that is going to occur. I will say that over, uh, especially since with COVID and the incident that happened in Minneapolis and the proposals that are being talked about in the state, training is going to be very uncertain this year. Um, right now, there are several bills pending that could affect what training we will do next year. May, it may mandate some more training, so we'll be sitting down this year. It's going to be, uh, highly in flux this year, what training we're actually going to get done and what may be mandated in the state, uh, as, as far as when they're, when they're talking about, uh, increasing certification standards and other things for police officers. So that is something we have to, gonna have to keep an eye on, uh, this year. Server and operating system upgrade in the amount of sixty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Right now, we're operating on Windows Server 2008, which is scheduled to go to end of life in 2020, which means it'll no longer be able to receive critical security updates, which will not allow us to use, uh, maintain our contracts with NCIC and CGS to do law enforcement functions. So we need, that needs to be, that needs to be upgraded. Police academy costs in the amount of seventy-one thousand eight hundred and two dollars. We are projecting to send six recruits to the academy in August. So that's the cost to cover their uniforms, tuition, and other things in order for them to be able to go to the academy. Uh, vehicles, this is five hundred thousand dollars. Part of that is to cover you, year two out of our three-year lease for five vehicles, and then it's the purchase and additional six vehicles. This year, the vehicle costs have gone up again significantly. Um, the cost of one patrol vehicle include, with a mobile data terminal is going to be approximately sixty-two thousand dollars for one car. And the last item, TASER replacement program, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. This is, um, a part of a three-year lease program we went into for the TASERS. We, the, most of our TASERS were over, were purchased in 2007, and we're in excess of ten years old. This is enabling us to replace all of our TASERS, provide the training, and, um, the essential equipment that goes with them, so all the officers will have new and updated, new and up-to-date equipment and will be trained properly in their use. Next slide. And with that, that is our proposed budget for this year, and I stand ready to take any questions that you may have.
All right, so, um, now, will, anyone, uh, on board for public comment? This is over the public hearing. Sarah?
No Zoom comments at this time.
One, thank you. Lynn?
No telephone comments at this time.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna open it up to councillors' questions and comments to Chief Sonnenbend. Councillor Cullen. Councillor Cullen, please.
Thank you, thank you, chief, for the brief presentation. Couple of questions. Um, one is, are we okay with community resource officers for the summer? Because I think that we're anticipating tempers will be flying this summer.
We have, uh, sorry to step in your shoes. Um, we do have, um, all ten, we hired all ten this year that we were budgeted for. They are currently working, they are out there. Um, one is lagging behind because we ended up, that had one that did end up getting COVID before he started his training program, so he's gonna be a little bit delayed, and once he's cleared medically, he'll do the training program and he'll be out there. This year, we're being modified a little bit because of the challenges we're facing with this, with this pandemic. The community service officers, the training this year had to change a little bit to make, to be able to operate in the environment. We had to make them a little bit more aware, self-aware of how to protect themselves, operating in the pandemic environment, give them some additional equipment as far as masks to hand out to the public, provide them with some additional guidance on how to approach the public when we're talking about these different phases. And they're going to be, um, some of them are going to be doing some time down at the beaches, specifically like Veterans Beach, or Calmas Beach, or the C Street Beach, because those are areas, we thought that those are the best areas to have them down to help the beach staff for one, and for number two, those are some areas that we've seen some traditional issues with the homeless because of their proximity to the Woodline, the bathhouses, the Kennedy Memorial. We wanted the CSOs to operate in that environment because it still maintains a lot of the same mission that they had on Main Street, dealing with the homeless, and a reason why a lot of even joined the program, to be honest with you. And it will give them an opportunity to still fulfill their mission that they signed up to do, but yet help the town in another area.
So are you confident that ten is enough, or will we go out and grab more if we need more? I just feel like the worst place to cut anything is the police department these days. Uh, especially with, I mean, it's busy, like, I, I, I had a very busy work week, which I did not expect due to, due to COVID, but it was so busy. People are here, people are coming, it's gonna be a full throttle summer, I think. Um, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're covered by not, you know, by not funding fully. It, it kind of scares me a little bit, so I just wanted your opinion on that.
Um, it is going to be a challenge, um, but I will say that, I mean, taking good relationships and good communication with the town manager, with town finance, and we keep them apprised of what our situation is at all times. And if, you know, thank, thankfully, we operate in a system here that we're able to come back for appropriations or other things further on down the road. It's not a one-shot deal, like a, a regular town meeting where if you don't get it at the beginning of the year, you're not gonna get it. We have an opportunity to do some flexibility here, and the town, we're talking to them constantly, we're gonna stay, talk to them constantly, and if things change, we're gonna, we're gonna let, we're gonna let people know. But we'd also realize that people are out there, are being asked, not just us, but the community itself is being asked to tighten their belts, to operate in a different environment. And we're gonna do our best to shoulder the burden and do what we have to do, but we're, above all, we're here to provide public safety, and if that becomes an issue, I will certainly be talking to town management and town finance and making them aware of any needs that we may have as they arrive. I will.
I do have one follow-up question, and that is regarding the whole, um, um, the Black Lives Matter training for police departments and stuff, if it comes down from, from Charlie Baker, um, at his press conference yesterday, is, is that something you'll have to have more funding for to provide training for your officers for that?
That still remains to be seen. A lot of that stuff really hasn't been shared as far down the pipeline as I am. Uh, we are hearing some rumblings about some different things. I've seen some of the, what he's proposed, although it doesn't really get into specifics about what may change, um, is talking about some certification programs over the period of three years. A lot of it's gonna be tied into the current MPTC, so I would imagine that a lot of people that are current, have, were currently working for us, who have been certified by the Municipal Police Training Academy, have gone to proper academies, have gone to their in-service schedule, will may, will be certified, and that it's gonna work off of that. And I would see that as, as time changes, and they appoint, they're gonna be appointing a committee that's going to be overseeing to work with the Municipal Police Training Committee to decide, uh, so it's gonna be a certification committee to decide what additional trainings might be necessary. And so even they see some of these things, train, curriculum's change, there'll be different, probably different levels required if you get promoted, or you'll have a basic level of certification that may extend, you can go beyond and get higher certifications in certain areas to do more advanced jobs or more specialty assignments, but a lot of it still remains to be seen. But I would imagine that, um, it could have some effect on training budgets down the road. I don't know that it'll have a large impact this year, but we're keeping our eyes open and our, you know, our ears, you know, our ears to the ground to see what may be coming.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Madam Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, chief, and hello, uh, to Ann Spillane. Uh, she was here, but she's gone now.
Oh, she leave me alone.
Oh, there you are, I see you, I see you, thank you.
You are here.
First off, I want to thank you and, and, um, all of the, um, department, all of your department for your fine service.
Thank you.
I, needless to say, I'm a little disappointed to see the closure of the West Village Station. Um, I was there at the ribbon cutting under your predecessor, Chief. Um, and, uh, my only concern, and, and I, I can see the, the justification for it, um, however, uh, I think that was put in to provide a little more presence in the West Villages. Sometimes we feel a little left out over here in hinterland, and I would, um, and thank you for your, not only are you a great communicator with the town manager, uh, but you're a great communicator with, uh, the council. So, um, I would, uh, hope that you would, um, see to, uh, the, uh, the enforcement and, uh, diligence of, of providing service to the West Villages with or without a station. And I know you can go to the, the, um, respective, uh, fire stations if need be, so, um, but, uh, um, you know, we'll miss the West Village Station.
Oh, you know, our officers love using it, they love having the opportunity to be out there, they love having to be, be able to write reports or meet people out in the community without having to come back to the police station. I believe it was a good asset, but unfortunately, you know, when you're looking at making cuts that were the kind of cuts we're asked to make, and it comes down to personnel or services for a building that, you know, quite frankly, a little on down the road, the economy rebounds, we, we could be looking for another location somewhere out in the West Villages again, and I'm sure we'll be out there again and have another location as things change around, and we're committed to doing that in the future.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Any other councillors?
All Neary.
Mr. Neary, councillor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to reiterate, um, uh, thank you, chief, for, for looking at, you know, the difficult budget that, that you were asked to follow into and to, uh, follow through with. Um, it is a building, and I just want to commend not only you, but also the staff, the patrolmen on the road. Um, I can say that every, uh, interaction I've ever had with your staff has been just, uh, professionalism and courtesy, and, uh, we're really fortunate for the town to have a group of people that you have, that you, uh, have under you. And, um, again, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. I want to say, uh, take this opportunity to say thanks to the people, the men and women that I work for, they make my job very easy, they do a great job every day, they're out there serving the community, they've been coming to work every day. It hasn't been easy lately, but they're still shouldering the burden, they're still out there because they love the community, and they love where they work, they love where they live. And I really also want to take an opportunity to say thank you to the community. Uh, there has been a lot of support that we've heard from, we've gotten notes, we've gotten people stopped by, we've had people stop us in the street just to say thank you. And it really makes a difference when you work in such a wonderful place, and you can take pride with the people you work with and the people you work for, and it's, it's an honor to work in this community. Thank you.
Councillor Beedenbender?
Councillor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you so much. Um, I just want to add to that, um, you know, that councillor Cullen had mentioned it before about a standard of excellence across the town, um, and that all of our departments are urged and, uh, supported in, in, in achieving a standard of excellence, um, that there are standards in place, and that's the, the low bar, but what we do in Barnstable is always try and achieve more. And I would say that our Barnstable Police Department is a perfect example of that. Um, and, and over the last, you know, ten, twelve years, it has really worked hard to become a model, I would say, not only for the Commonwealth, but for other communities like ours across the nation. Of course, you can't compare us to a Bo, uh, to a Boston, or Chicago, or New York, but you can compare us to a lot of other communities like ours, and we really stand out. Your hiring practices, your training practices, um, your attention to the, uh, emotional well-being of your, your officers are definitely a model that I, I, I would, I would like us to promote, and hopefully other communities will look at as well. So kudos to, to you and the work that was done initially by your predecessor on, on making the BPD, uh, what it is today, and, and you have very strong community ties. I mean, I would say that we really are a model of community policing with our CIU, um, you know, controls, also, you know, Unity Day, your transparency, your open door policy, uh, all sets a great example for other communities, and I thank you and all of the officers that serve for your exemplary service and the work you do for the town and your commitment to being connected and serving the citizens. So thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. And, you know, it's, 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 it's all us together doing this, it's not just, you know, the officers and the people I work with do a great job, and quite honestly, I'm standing on their shoulders. It's, a lot of this is their work, their initiative, their thoughts, their hard work and their hard labor, and it's also hard work on the part of the community, because the community does their fair share too here. It is, it is a cooperative effort, it really is community policing and working together, and that's what it takes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we vote on item 2020-147.
Second. We have a first and a second. This is to approve the item as written, item number 2020-147 for the Barnstable Police Department. Madam Clerk, please.
Look at this thing, I'm crazy.
Councilors. Neary?
Yes.
Snap?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilbert?
Yes.
Heedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
And Leveque?
A very emphatic yes.
That is thirteen yes, passes very nicely.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
You too, thank you for coming out. Thank you, Ann, for coming out, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Neary, please, if, if you could read into the record of the day, item number 2020-148.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll, roll call, majority vote. It is item number 2020-148, the appropriation order in the amount of two million eighty-six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Planning and Development Department budget as written.
Thank, thank you very much. We have a first, we have a second?
I second it, yes, and I think, uh, Elizabeth Jenkins is here.
She is, thank you very much. Elizabeth, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, President Hubert, Vice President Rap Grissette, Councillors Elizabeth Jenkins, here to present the fiscal year 21 Planning and Development Department budget. The Planning and Development Department is comprised of six program functions who work in an interdisciplinary way to support the priorities of the town and the town council's strategic plan by developing and implementing. strategic plan by developing and implementing comprehensive land use strategies with a particular focus on housing, economic development, and preserving and protecting natural resources. I have a screen share here that will walk you through the remainder of my budget presentation. The Planning and Development Department Fiscal Year 21 Budget is essentially level funded. Our department's budget makes up approximately 1.17% of the total general fund budget, and we're largely funded by tax revenue. There's three components of the budget I'll talk about tonight, personnel, operating, and our capital outlay. We made a number of changes to the Planning and Development Department personnel in the fiscal year 20 that are being carried through to our 21 budget. One position in planning and development was eliminated in support of the Communications Division restructuring, and one was transferred to planning and development that'll continue to work in an interdepartmental manner. This year, Planning and Development also is proposing rejections in the budget resulting from adjustments in our operation at Bismarck. On our operating budget, Planning and Development Department is proposing across the board cuts in our operating budget that totaled to approximately 13%. Again, we are also proposing reductions in our Bismarck and parking operations to result, as a result of anticipated lower revenues in the Bismarck accounts. Finally, we have two capital outlay requests this year coming from our conservation program, both of them related to the ongoing, ongoing programs to, that, that deal with a lot of aquatic invasive species control, that's hydrilla in a number of our ponds and fanwort in a number of our ponds. Again, those are ongoing programs administered by our conservation program to deal with those invasive species and keep those under control. We did have a slight increase in the cost this year of providing, of providing those services that results in the, the essential level funding of our budget. Be more than happy to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Can we get back to full screen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone for public hearing?
No public comment on Zoom.
No public comment on the phone.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to open it for Counselors' questions, comments, concerns. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that we vote on item 2021-48 as presented.
Second. We have a first and a second. All right, this, this is a vote to approve as written, item number 2020-148, the Planning Development Department. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors? Snap? Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
That is 13 yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would ask Counselor Dagwan to kindly read into the record of the day, item number 2020-149, Community Services Department General Fund Budget, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I might be breaking up a little bit, but I'll give it a try. This is Community Service Department General Fund Budget, item 2021-49, appropriation order in the amount of $2,389,106 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Community Service Department General Fund Budget. This item is to be opened for a public hearing and requires a majority roll call vote.
Second.
Thank you very much. Do we have someone for the rationale?
Yes, that would be me.
Oh, hi, Madam. Thank you, Madam.
Good evening, President Hebert, Vice President Rap Grissette, members of the town council. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. To present to you for your approval are fiscal year 21 Community Services Department Budget. So if you will allow me, I will share my screen, and I will be brief as we work through this. Believe it or not, we have no photographs in our presentation tonight. So, overall, we are looking at a budget for the Community Services General Fund that oversees, this will fund our Recreation Division and our Council on Aging Division. Overall, we're going to see about a 7% decrease on our FY '20 approved budget, and the significant changes that we're looking at this year, we have a $46,000 offset of contractual obligations. We saw some restructuring of the Community Services Department over the last year, and as a result of that, we'll be transferring the web developer position, moving out under the Communications Department, which is now under the town manager's office, and also transferring out the marketing manager position, which is moving over to planning and development. Also, a reallocation of the Community Services Director's salary, which was formerly part of the PEG Enterprise Fund, now the director is fully funded out of the general fund. With the COVID crisis, we had to close our Adult Day Program, and we do not intend to bring that program back online until it is safe to do so, so that will be a phase four reintroduction. So we anticipate some cost savings as a result of the closure of that program. And then the various other reductions that we're seeing, we're going through our line items, obviously trying to be, you know, cutting wherever we could, so we saved some funding there. And a few of the additional costs that we'll see for FY '21, primarily with our Recreation Department introducing credit card payments, which was something that we piloted last year, obviously it was very successful, and it's very timely considering the crisis that we're in now, where we're moving everything to contactless service. So we'll see about a $14,000 cost to purchase that equipment, and then some cost for portable bathrooms to replace a copier, and capital outlay of $12,000 to replace some aged out equipment for our beaches and, you know, lifesaving equipment. So overall, we are looking for you to approve our proposed budget. Our general fund for community services comprises about 1.34% of the total general fund, and so for FY '21, we're requesting $2,389,106. So for your consideration, I propose that to you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'm going to open it now for public hearing. Do we have anyone for public hearing?
No public comment on Zoom.
No public comment on the phone.
Thank you very much. We're going to close public comment hearing, none, and I'm going to open it now for Counselors' questions, thoughts, comments. Counselor Snap, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if either Madeline or Donna Marie could speak to the needs of our seniors in this time of COVID, and I know you've done a fabulous effort to get meals out there, but are there some hidden folks that we're not really seeing and not knowing that they're in need of services?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to respond to that. As, you know, the crisis started, that was obviously a primary concern for the town manager, for our Council on Aging staff, and we immediately, you know, jumped into action to try and see, you know, how we could respond, particularly given our older residents, you know, are extremely susceptible to COVID-19. So working with our Council on Aging staff, we moved into, you know, being, the biggest challenge that we knew we were going to encounter was support for a lot of our older residents, you know, who need reassurance, who live alone, given the risk of going to the grocery store, you know, getting access to food. So we implemented a grab and go program that we were very grateful to have the support of the Barnstable School Department. And also, what we've already seen is an increase in the need to respond, you know, doing a lot of daily calls and reassurance, particularly for, with the closure of our day program, you know, being able to be there to support the caregivers in our community. Donna, if you want to join in, because I'd like you obviously to have an opportunity to add into this, and I do want to congratulate Donna, she's recently been promoted to our Council on Aging Director, and we couldn't be happier for her.
Thank you so much. It's, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and I look forward to getting to know each of you better. As Madeline spoke about, our day program folks and their, our clients and their family caregivers are always a paramount concern for us, and, you know, it was a very difficult decision, but it was the right decision, given the many challenges, even in the best of times in operating these type of programs. Many of our, if not most of our clients have some memory impairment and physical limitations, and given the state that we're in now, with all the seriousness of the COVID virus, we knew that we could not ensure everyone's health and safety. And actually, I and our program director personally called each and every family and spoke to them and explained why we came to this decision, and they were all in agreement, and our assurance to them and our promise will be and continues to be that we will be there for them. Our program coordinator, Stacy Cullen, has done a great job. We are doing a lot of virtual outreach with them. We actually have entertainment, exercise, we deliver packets to the home that have crossword puzzles, other activities, art projects that folks can work on, and we are in the process of also adding support groups for the caregivers and more activities to keep everyone engaged. That's the biggest challenge when you're home with someone seven days a week who has these limitations. It was a great, with, for caregivers to have time away for themselves, and of course, we can offer that now, but we continue and will continue to be a support to all of those families.
A follow-up question. Do you keep demographics of who has served across the town? I, I noticed when I did the grab and go a couple times that, you know, obviously, it was right in Centerville, so there was a lot of Centerville people coming through. Also, your proximity to the public housing, I, I just wonder sometimes if those of, those residents out in the hinterlands in, in Marston's Mills and even parts of Kootenay, how are we reaching out to those folks?
Well, we always do reassurance calls, and they are certainly in our catchment areas in terms of identifying, you know, older adults that may need, you know, some monitoring in terms of their ability to get the services and supports that they need. We did find that people came from all over the town of Barnstable, and there were people that lived in some of the housing complexes, that there was a person that still drove, and they would actually pick up, you know, meals for people that lived in the same community. So there were many ways that we reach out to folks, and we certainly are constantly reminding people in the community, if there was someone you're concerned about in your neighborhood, we're working. You know, our doors may be closed, but we are working and we are here and ready to assist anyone in our community that needs our help.
And Counselor Snap, just to follow up on that, yes, we do keep, you know, statistical demographic information on all of our participants and, you know, who we're providing services to. Not surprisingly, most of our, you know, residents tend to live, you know, our participants tend to live in high central, but we're very proactive in reaching out to older residents in all of the villages. That's always, you know, a priority for us, working with our partners, with the local libraries, you know, we've been able to go out and do services. For example, our outreach coordinators have done office hours in the local libraries because it's easier for some of our older residents to go to the library as opposed to coming to the Adult Community Center.
I'm sorry, Vice President, Madam Vice President, please.
Oh, thank you. I, I want to thank you, Madeline, and welcome. I think this is your first budget meeting in the head of the Community Services, and welcome, Donna, too. I, I have some concerns about the Golf Enterprise, and I'd like Mark Milne, first off, to just shed a little light on that, and, and I know Mr. McIntyre is with us tonight, and I do want to find out how aggressive you are in reopening to the general public, how that's working, and how the tea times are working, and how's it looking? Because I know of all of the community services, I think golf, my, my, the Golf Enterprise Fund might be in, in some dire, not dire straits, but concerning.
Do you want me to answer that now? We'll wait until we get to that because that's actually the next item for me to present is the Golf Enterprise. That's the next appropriation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. I'll, I'll reserve that comment for the next one.
Thank you for the heads up on the question, though.
Thanks, but I do see Counselor Clark has a question.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Council President Hebert. Through you, may I request the town manager that these PowerPoint presentations that we see today be available on the web for public as a reference?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, the answer, yes, but we'll, we'll collect all of those and make them all available.
I'm happy to email it to all of you also.
Thank you very much. Counselor Snap, you have a question?
No.
Counselor Snap?
No, I, I asked my question.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other counselors?
So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2020-149 as presented.
Second. Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. So this is to approve as written, item number 2020-149, Community Service Department General Fund Budget. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan? Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Snap? That's 13 yes.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I also want to just, you know, thank John Gleese, our Assistant Recreation Director, who is also here with us, Patty Machado, our Director of Recreation, was unable to join us, so want to thank John and Donna for being here.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you, John, for being here tonight. Thank you very much. I would ask Counselor Shaughnessy, please, to read into the record today, item number 2020-150, Community Services Department Golf Course Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, President Hebert. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote. This is item number 2020-150, Community Services Department Golf, Golf Course Enterprise Fund, an appropriation order in the amount of $3,648,381 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget.
Second.
So, we have a first and a second. Thank you very much. Ration- Rashi. Rashi Al, please.
I'm here.
Just speaking to Rashi Al.
Yeah, thank you, and President Hebert.
There you are, Madeline, thank you.
I'm here, I'm sorry, thank you. So I'm happy to be here with you again to present our FY21 Golf Division Enterprise Budget. And with me is Bruce McIntyre, our Director of Golf. As you know, Barnstable Golf runs two eighteen hole championship courses, Old Barnstable Fairgrounds and the Hyannis Golf Course. Again, we're looking at for this enterprise account, we've made significant reductions to our FY21 budget. So just to go over some of the significant changes, we've eliminated a division assistant position as well as reductions to our temporary positions. We've also cut back on lime soil budget reductions and also gas diesel. So we've made significant cost cutting measures. So overall, we're looking at a 5.88 reduction off the Golf Enterprise Account for fiscal year 21. And the Golf budget is about 1.73% of the total appropriated funds for the town. So if anybody has any questions, which I know Counselor Grissette, do you want to repeat your question or should I just?
I would, I think we should see if anyone from the public wants to speak to this first.
Opening up for public hearing.
No public comment via phone.
Thank you very, very much. Hearing that, we will close public hearing and we will open it now. Keep comments, questions of the counselors, please.
If I?
Madam Vice President, please.
Yeah, I apologize. I apologize for jumping ahead. And I know, Madeline, you're overseeing all these divisions, so thank you. So I don't know if I need to repeat my question, but I think you probably anticipated this, Bruce, as well as Mark Mill.
I'll go first and Mark can speak after me. My name is Bruce McIntyre, Director of Golf Operations. Good evening, President Hebert, Vice President, Representative, Counselors. To answer Justice Grissette's question, yes, we are open. We opened for members only on May 8th. At that time, we were advised by the state in our guidelines where for fifteen to eighteen minute tee times, which is about running on 50% capacity. From May 8th through the end of the month, we serviced just under 8,000 rounds of golf, of which eighty-four percent, excuse me, eighty-seven percent were played by annual pass holders. When we entered into Phase Two, we slowly opened our golf shops to the public as well as our practice facilities. Following all of the Phase Two guidelines that the state has set forth, we've been operating pretty much full speed ahead since the 8th of June. We were allowed to decrease tee time intervals to 12 minutes, which greatly increased our capacity. We're still running about 80% capacity. But at this time through June, we're still looking at about 75% of all play being played by annual pass holders versus the general public. So, you know, there's some misconceptions out there that the non-members are getting preferential treatment in tee times, that is certainly not the case. I don't know if there's anything more to that question or if I missed part of it.
Well, let me ask you, when you talk about 87%, where are they playing? Are they playing primarily at Old Barnstable or are they at Hyannis?
No, it's, for annual pass holders, it's about a 60-40 split between their total play between Old Barnstable over Hyannis. In general, of the 70,000 rounds of golf we do a year, 40,000 rounds are played at Old Barnstable and 30,000 rounds are played at Hyannis. And that's been, that's been a plateau for both courses now for the last six or seven years.
Thank you. And if Mark Mill could just talk about the enterprise account and the fund reserves and the balance.
Thank you for that question. Mark Mill, Director of Finance. Public health emergency came about. No other operation in town was probably impacted more by it than our golf operations. We're just starting to enter the busy season for the golf operation. And having to close the courses down significantly impacted the revenue that the golf course is estimated to generate this year. But as things turn around, we opened back up. Mr. McIntyre, just discussed, we're starting to pick up more rounds. We're seeing memberships renew. And so we are starting to see those revenues come back in. However, we are anticipating a revenue deficit this year as a result of the public health emergency. The Golf Enterprise Fund has a $680,000 reserve. That will cover the revenue deficit for this year. However, we are conservatively projecting revenues for next year because we don't know how long this, don't know how long it will take us to climb out of this situation. But we, this is not the new norm for golf operations. We do believe that things will go back to normal when all of our lives go back to normal if this emergency is over. So we are providing some additional tax support for this operation as a result of the reduced revenue estimates for next year. But again, I believe it's just going to be for one year only. We'll watch this operation closely going forward. Or if that does not happen, if we don't see a turnaround. But you do see an increase in tax support in the budget for fiscal year 21 as a result of the unpredictability as to when we'll be able to back up the full operation and generating the revenues that this fund historically generates every year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Schnapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at this item from the context of what has been happening in our country in the last few weeks. And our budget document is really a document that assigns our priorities as a community. And whereas I really appreciate our golf courses and how well they've been taken care of and how they've been self sustaining for every year up until now, I have a concern if I'm asking for taxpayer dollars to be spent to subsidize annual pass members, out of town golfers, a demographic that really isn't where I think we should be moving. And it's, that request is a third of the entire community services budget. So based on that, again, this is not a reflection on our golf program. And I know that you've taken some hits last year because of, you know, trying to deal with the better management of the turf, and that was tough. And I think that gave you some hits. I have a hard time supporting this request in this format this year.
Thank you, Counselor Schnapp. Would Mr. McIntyre like to respond to that?
Not at this time, no. I would agree with Counselor Schnapp that, you know, I've been here for going on 28 years and we have been a successful self generating, self operating system for so many years. We've deferred capital investments in managing the assets and taking care of them for citizens for years to come. We're still deferring. And as she also said, the transitional plan to a green management system for the golf course is extremely expensive. So between taking that challenge on and dealing with our golf courses being closed and the subsequent loss of revenue, we're walking a tight rope between, you know, environmental sustainability and economic sustainability.
Thank you for that. Any other counselors' questions? I'm sure Counselor Levek, Counselor Levek.
Just in response to Counselor Schnapp's comments, and kind of, again, I'm the liaison to the Golf Committee. And it has been a very challenging couple of years for the Golf Enterprise Fund and our golf courses. And in now with this pandemic, but to be honest, at this point in time, this is one of the only recreational things that we have to do for our children in this town. Barnstable Little League, for example, has been trying to get open and they haven't gotten permission yet to practice, even though Phase Two, you know, has been open since June 8th and they've been allowed by state to practice, but because certain things have to be put in place. You know, so this is actually an activity that mothers and daughters, fathers and sons, all families. I've actually seen people actually be able to do together and spend some time together recreationally supported by the town of Barnstable. So in that respect, I would be fully supportive of this budget the way it is. And again, because of the challenges we have, again, it's unfortunate this time and maybe we can review things moving forward. But it's a very valuable asset at this point in time. Just to let things go would be, I think, foolish. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Levek. Any other counselors?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we move to vote on item 2020-150 as presented.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve item number 2020-150, as written, Community Services Department Golf Course Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors? Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Eden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
No.
Shawna See?
No.
Okay, that's two no and eleven yes. It passes.
Thank you, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that good work. Counselor Levek, if we could, please, if you could read into the record, item number 2020-153, Community Services Department Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund. That's found on page 11.
I believe it's 151.
151. I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said 153.
Oh, terrible stuff. 151, thank you for that correction.
That's okay. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority. This is item number 2020-151, Community Services Department Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund, appropriation order in the amount of $3,352,000, I'm sorry, $3,352,395 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Hyannis Youth and Community Enterprise Fund Budget, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second for rationale. Who is speaking on rationale?
Yes, Counselor President Hebert. So our FY21 Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund Budget, what we're presenting is about a 4% reduction on our FY20 approved budget. We're entering our second decade now of the facility being open to the community. Continue to provide quality leisure opportunities for our youth and everybody in our community to benefit from. And so looking at the significant changes for this year, we are making some reductions in staffing, temporary positions. We're cutting just under $2,000. We're delaying the hiring of the rink supervisor position, which will save over $13,000. And then we've got some reductions in savings for utilities and, you know, various fine items that we're looking at cutting. So overall, we've got, as I said, about a 4% cut. And the Enterprise Fund constitutes about 1.73% of total appropriated funds. And I have our Assistant Recreation Director, John Gleason, and our HYCC Program Manager, Joe Izzo, are here if you have any questions.
Okay. Can we open it up for public hearing? Do we have anybody in line for public hearing?
No public comments via Zoom.
No public comments via phone.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. We'll close public hearing and we'll open it to counselor comments, questions. Did John like to say anything or? John Gleason, did you want to make any comment?
No, thanks for having me. We're excited to get going with the summer, our beach operations, and looking forward to opening up the Youth Center in the weekend. But we're just kind of working through the pandemic and how to operate some programs and services for the community. And we're ready and we'll be out at the beaches on the weekends and opening up full time on the 27th and we're ready to help serve the public.
Thank you very much, John. Thanks for being here. Have a safe summer. Mr. Izzo, would you like to say anything?
Joe, you're on mute there.
Thank you, President Hebert. No, thank you to the council for the support. Thank you to the community for the support. The facility itself has been closed since mid-March as a result of the pandemic. And we are working through a number of different scenarios and targeting an opening date at some point, hopefully in mid-August at the earliest.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here and I hope you have a good, safe summer. Madeline, did you have another comment? Madeline?
What I did want to just follow up on is Counselor Levek's question about, you know, Little League. We are actually working right now on all of the plans that are being submitted to us. We are trying to get as many outdoor facilities open as possible because we understand the importance for our youth to be able to get out there after being cooped up and driving their parents crazy the last couple of months and they all want to kind of get together. But we need to ensure we're doing it in, you know, alignment with the state guidelines and also, you know, ensuring the safety of our children as they start to get outdoors. So we've been working internally with, under, you know, Town Manager Mark Els, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn have been providing us, you know, a lot of guidance along the way and support. We're working with our GPW currently on getting Sinus up. So some facilities have already reopened and we're hoping to get everything. Sinus should be up in the next couple of days, you know, sooner. And, you know, we'll be in touch with all of our user groups and everybody's been submitting plans for us to review and it's all looking good so far. So we're excited to get everybody out there. I can't thank all of the community services staff enough for every extra mile they've gone over the last couple of months, looking at new ways to reach people in our community in the absence of being able to connect in person, which is what we are so, you know, you know, attuned to doing. And that's where we find the reward in our work is that connection. But we've been, you know, doing a lot of virtual programming, a lot of creative ways as we move forward. And I think a lot of enhancements that are going to serve us well into the future. So thank you to all of our team and thank you to all of you for your support.
Thank you very much. I hope you have a great, safe summer. I'm looking, I don't see any other questions from counselors, so I would.
Can I just respond? Can I respond?
Counselor Levek, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Madeline, I did not mean to make that come across as a foul as a criticism. All I was trying to say was that golf is really the only thing that we have recreationally and other people are doing, looking to do other things, but it just hasn't been possible to open up yet. So I appreciate all your efforts and I know you're waiting for those signs to be posted so that people can be informed of how rules and regulations need to be put in, you know, properly put in place. And again, I appreciate all your efforts. I had no way that I need to make that a criticism at all. So thank you again.
Yeah, none taken. Obviously, we've got to, you know, do our, you know, taking a very measured, careful approach to everything and want to do it, you know, as safely as possible. But I will say, this is a great time for golf to recruit some new players. So, I mean, I think the fact that golf opened was a great marketing strategy and we do hope that more people will consider, you know, participating in golf. And we hope to see all of And we hope to see all of you at the beach this summer.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move for a vote, item 2020-151 as written.
Second.
Well, a first and a second, I thank you very much. So this is to approve item number 2020-151, Community Services Department Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That's 13 yes.
Thank you very much. Measure pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Thanks for being with us. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Counselor Schnapp. You have, you have a question, Counselor Schnapp? Comment?
You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to respectfully leave the meeting for the rest of the evening. I wish you all well and continue the good deliberation in voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Safe evening and best to your mom. Thank you. So councilors, my hope is that we will end before 11 o'clock. It might be 10:59, but we will hopefully end before 11 o'clock. I want to get as much material done as we possibly can so that next Thursday, we, we are going to have a heavy night again. We have some very important things to discuss besides finishing the budget, but we will finish the budget before we go into the other items. So every item we get done tonight will give us a little more breathing space on that time we meet. And I'm hoping that we don't have to go into a second meeting. But again, the deliberation that we're having is such a high quality, it's a dream that everybody's participating and it's an honor to be working with all of you. And you're working so hard on this and I appreciate it. I'm going to ask councillor Clark, please, to read in item number 2020-152, Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget, please.
Thank you very much, councillor President Hebert. Now, this is old business, a public hearing requiring a roll call majority vote. Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget, item number 2020-152, appropriation order in the amount of $3,146,965. The purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget.
Mr. President, that should be 1 million.
Sorry. One, one, sorry. Should I read the whole thing into the record again?
I don't believe so.
I think without correction, I think we're fine. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll second, I'll second the 1,146,965.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so thank you. I think we have two fine people to speak on this issue. Who'd like to go first?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, Madam President and fellow councilors. This is Derek Lawson, Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. I'm just going to quickly share my screen with you for the presentation. Also with me this evening is Nina Coleman, Director of Natural Resources and Sandy Neck Beach Park Manager. She's available to assist and answer any questions that you may have. The proposed 2021 Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget is a decrease of $121,982 or 9.61% from the 2020 budget. We are proposing reductions in seasonal wages, professional services, the boarding of dogs, and the gasoline budget line item. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. We're just going to check, see if there's anyone for public hearing.
Public comment via Zoom.
Lynn, anybody on the phone?
I'm sorry, no one on public comment on the phone.
I thank you very much. And now I will open it up for any councillor's comment. And I will also ask Nina Coleman if you would like to make any comment.
I see councillor Neary had to stand up.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Councillor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. Just a question, Derek. Has there been maybe a process in place or set in place yet on Sandy Neck voting end of Sandy Neck and how that will be administered?
I'm sorry, councillor Neary, could you repeat the question?
Sure, I'm just wondering on, at Sandy Neck. Well, maybe it's just Marina. Should I wait for Sandy Neck, I guess? It's still on Nina, so that's what I was thinking. I'm just wondering how boats are going to be put onto the end of Sandy Neck when they come on, you know, when they're traveling over to the neck during the, during the week. Is there a process that's been developed or in place yet?
If you'd like to speak to that now, we can. Or we can speak to that when we present the Sandy Neck budget.
We can do that, sure.
Okay.
I had a question if I could.
Madam Vice President, please.
Yeah, thank you. And Derek, I bet you wish this was a $3 million budget. No, I'm only kidding. Can you explain why your department, what, what it means by boarding the dogs? Is the town in the business of boarding dogs?
That is for our animal control officer, obviously. When they acquire a dog at off hours, you know, sometimes they do have to board a dog and take care of that dog overnight. And we've seen that we haven't spent up to that amount that we had budgeted for it and that's why we're reducing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other councilors? Since none, I will entertain a motion to approve budget item number 2020-152, Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget.
So move.
Yeah, Mr. President, I move we vote on that item.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much. Councillor Cullen, if you would please read into the record, item number 2020-153, Marine and Environmental Affairs Department Marine Enterprise Fund.
Yes, item number 2020-0153. This is the open for a public hearing with a roll call majority. Appropriation order in the amount of $787,977. For the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Marina Enterprise Fund Budget as written.
Thank you very much. Ms. Coleman and Nina, will you speak to this?
I'll, I'll take this one, sir. Again, Derek Lawson, Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. The proposed 2021 Marina Enterprise Fund Budget is a decrease of $44,803 or 5.3% from the 2020 budget. We are proposing reductions in our advertising and our marine-related services budget line items. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
With councillor Neary, please.
Thanks. Sorry, I put the horse before the cot there, Derek. Has a plan been put in place yet in terms of, you know, landing boats and, you know, and vehicles on Sandy Neck and boats on the tip? I'm just curious. Is anything set up?
Now, councillor Neary, are you speaking of Beach Point?
No, well, Sandy Neck, yes.
Okay, Sandy Neck proper, okay. So far this season, we've had a large beach to work with. Unfortunately, due to the COVID restrictions, there are some distances that we have to keep. And even more recently, with the, the birds, the nesting of shorebirds on Sandy Neck. That is going to greatly diminish the amount of folks that we can get on to the, on to the ORV portion of the beach. Early in the season, trailers behind campers were allowed to go out on the beach. Now that we're down to one mile of ORV beach, it has been determined not to allow the, any trailers at this point. We're trying to make the beach have as many folks out on the beach as possible. And by doing that, by eliminating the trailers. Once these shorebirds move on and we have a little bit more beach to work with, obviously, we would like to let these folks bring their boats and trailers back onto the beach to launch from the beach.
So I think my question is more on Beach Point. Is it, is there any regulation or any control over that part of Sandy Neck, the very tip?
Well, Beach Point, obviously, is only exposed during low tides. We do monitor that area or we're on patrol. The harbor master staff is on patrol in that area and especially heavily on the weekends. And we do monitor that. We check it for safety and if anyone is, needs a call for service, we're there to help them.
Okay, so there's, there's nothing, there's no, nothing in place that might be under, let's say, direction regarding distancing and all that kind of stuff that's going on in other areas?
Typically, these folks will be launching from Blish Point Boat Ramp or the Barnstable Harbor Boat Ramp next to Maticus. We do have social distancing signs at both places. We do have a lot of information on these boards and we use the guidelines that have come down from the state. And obviously, we let the boaters know while they're there and while they're launching what they should be doing.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to open it officially for a public hearing. No, 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 no problem.
Madam Vice President, had her hand up.
Well, I would defer to the president to see if anyone from the public wants to speak.
Right, and thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Sarah, do we have anybody in queue?
No public comment on Zoom.
Thank you very much. And Lynn?
No public comment on phone.
Thank you very much. So we are being recorded and I think it's very, very important that nobody comes back to us and says, you didn't allow me to speak. We did and we verified that there was nobody in queue, so that works out fine. Thank you very much. Madam Vice President, you had a question?
I had a question about, I know you were going to experiment with transient moorings. Has that been implemented? And has any, are there any takers? It was a little early in the season, but how many are you doing and the fee and all that for that?
Fortunately, we had a lot of the work already done before COVID had hit. Some of the guidelines was to limit the amount of transients coming into marinas or into new areas at the beginning of this public health crisis. That has changed. So we are now accepting transients and it's great timing. Our dockware account opens up tomorrow and we do have a mooring in Katoa Bay, right off of Katoa Town Dock. And folks can go ahead and reserve that on their Dockware app as soon as tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Speak up if I don't see you, speak up. But seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item number 2020-153, Marine and Environmental Affairs Department Marine Enterprise Fund. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp. Oops, sorry. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much. Measure passes. I would ask Madam Vice President if you would kindly read into the record, item number 2020-154, Marine and Environmental Affairs Department of Sandy Neck Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2020-154. I'd like to, and this is old business, and I'd like to open it for a public hearing with a roll call majority. It's appropriation order in the amount of $961,288. For the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Sandy Neck and Park Enterprise Fund Budget as written.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Thank you. And.
Good evening again, Derek Lawson, Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. The proposed 2021 Sandy Neck Enterprise Fund Budget is a decrease of $35,171 or 3.53% from the 2020 budget. We are proposing a reduction in the sand stabilization budget line item. We have not used dune nourishment funding in the past two years as we've experienced mild winter seasons. We hope this weather pattern continues. However, if, if needed, we can bring this back up as a supplemental request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I will open this to a public hearing.
No public comment via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment via phone at this time.
Thank you both. I appreciate that. Now I will open it up to any councillor comment, questions, concerns. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. And I'm not sure whether to address this to Nina or to Derek, but I do have one concern with a recent incident at Sandy Neck involving the inflatable unicorn, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And, you know, as part of that incident, there was sort of a real lapse in terms of getting aid. And I guess as part of that, I feel like having presence at Sandy Neck Beach, whether it's a paddleboard, a kayak, or a jet ski with a sled behind it that's ready to go, I, I think that's really something that we need to think about investing in, particularly with Great Whites being seen off, off of the coast at Sandy Neck. There are lots of paddleboarders and kayakers out there. And I think a lot of people who are visiting, you know, those of us who grew up there are familiar with the currents. But I think a lot of people that come to visit are just not as aware of the currents and they're not as aware of how quickly the wind can carry you out there. So I just wanted to bring that up as something that I really think we need to consider. I mean, I know the Coast Guard was able to respond within 20 minutes or so, but that was a spotter plane. That was not a vessel in the water that could have helped. I believe it, you know, took the harbor master pushing more like 40 minutes to get there. And I just think with all the people that enjoy Sandy Neck, we've got to do better. There, there needs to be something else there to be able to help someone get out in the water more quickly to help. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I, I agree with you. We were very fortunate on that day that there was a Good Samaritan that was close by. There was an offshore wind that day. It was a pretty stiff wind and that child did float out pretty quickly. I, I agree with you. We will look at what we can do to get a vessel of a small response, safety type vessel for Sandy Neck. I agree with you. We will look at what we can do to get a vessel of a small response safety type vessel for Sandy Neck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Starr?
I'd like to agree with Ms. Shaughnessy's suggestion there. We get a lot of southwest winds. People don't know how quickly you can get blown out to sea over there. And it's so far from Barnstable Harbor and from the canal that that's definitely something to think about. I'd also just like to, in general, commend the staff out there at Sandy Neck. They're juggling birds, turtles, campers, cottage owners. And it's sort of a changing every day-to-day, season to season. They're just everybody interacting, and I appreciate what they do out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We have an excellent management staff out there, and Nina Coleman does an excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President? Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion that we vote on. I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2020154 as presented.
Second.
First and a second. Thank you very much. This is to approve item number 2020-154, Marine and Environmental Affairs Department Sandy Neck Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Thank you. That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Have a good, safe summer. Counselor Starr, please, if you would read in, and it's obvious that we started the rotation back from the top going down to each of the precincts. Just give you a forewarning. Counselor Starr, if you would read into the minutes of the day, item number 2020-155. This is for the Licensing Department.
Old business, open to a public hearing, roll call majority. Item number 2020-155, Licensing Department appropriation order in the amount of $163,646 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Licensing Department budget.
Second. First and a second. Thank you very much. Who will be speaking on this?
Good evening. Richard Scally, Licensing Director.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I could ask Sarah Beal to help me with the slide presentation. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Town Counselors. I'm Richard Scally. I'm the Licensing Director. This budget for the Licensing Services Department for Fiscal Year 21, proposed budget is a decrease of $1,752, which is a 1.06% decrease under our fiscal year 2020 budget due to the elimination of our leased vehicle. We eliminated our vehicle that we have leased for a number of years and will be using a private vehicle with reimbursement instead. Next slide, Sarah. I won't go through all of these for you, Counselors, but I just wanted to bring up some items of issues, items that are prominent over the last few months in particular. So we've increased our site inspections and alteration of premises. As you know, we have expanded our outdoor dining and social distancing matrix and protocol. We are very busy with dining expansions right now. Outdoor dining has become obviously the prominent feature right now, particularly on Main Street and throughout the other villages as well. The guidelines are posted on our website. We have been holding a number of staff review meetings every day at 11:30 to get all of our businesses in place, to get them up and operating as soon as possible. And we have been working with all of our departments, Planning and Development, Inspection Services, Fire, Asset Management, to get all those businesses in place. We've had a number of hearings already on those, which has taken the majority of our time, and we're actually very excited to be able to be doing that right now. The businesses are very excited about being able to open. And as you can see from Main Street, it's looking, coming together very well. We've also done a number of site plan reviews. We represent the Licensing on site plan review. We assist the Town Manager on special projects, particularly with our flammable parking lot, taxi cabs, and liveries. And we were one of the first departments to start with remote hearings in March. The Licensing Board has been holding remote hearings for contactless applications and processing, which has been very successful. A number of our goals that are coming up, as you can see, is primarily e-permitting, streamlining, the outdoor dining process, we're working very diligently on the phases coming up as the governor announces them, to work with the Town Manager on announcements as they come, with the guys providing information to licensees, providing support to them, making sure that they know that we're here for them, that we want them to succeed, that we want them to open up as soon as possible. A number of departments and boards have reduced their process, eliminated requirements through governors or statutory changes or boards eliminating certain process or requirements to ease the stress on our businesses. Our Consumer Affairs Officer worked year-round on compliance investigations, and she's been meeting with a number of licensees, particularly now trying to help them and working on a number of different projects outside of licensing that involve a number of departments as well, particularly with housing issues and lodging house issues as well. Next slide. So as you probably know, in this budget, we also represent the Weight and Measures Department, which is a revolving fund, which is not part of this request, but I wanted to just point out to you that we had a very successful round over this past year of negotiating, completing new intermunicipal agreements with 10 different towns. I met personally with all the different town managers of the 10 towns. So they now are contributing to the Weight and Measures program for a cost recovery. And that was a very long process, but very successful in that people from the towns will be contributing to the program as they have not been in the past. We've been working with the Division of Standards on a number of surveys and delinquent fuel licenses. Our certifications are still up, even though we're unable to go to different meetings at this point in time. And keeping up our equipment is primary goal, making sure that we are helping the businesses and helping the customers out there, particularly with regards to gas stations and grocery stores right now, who have been up and operating as essential businesses. And we still continue to receive complaints, particularly with gouging or price changes or markings, price markings that are incorrect. We continue to work on those. We continue to consolidate our inspectors' schedules to be able to handle those and with outreach to the towns and making sure that we know, they know that we're here for them. Last slide. So as you can see from our budget comparison, in our last year, we brought in $515,500. We anticipate a decrease primarily due to the lack of one-day events, entertainment, one-day alcohol licenses that are not being held or will not be held coming up in the next year. With the anticipated change of about 5.57% decrease, however, we still anticipate bringing in $486,797, which more than covers our budget of $163,646. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have with your guys to License and Weight and Measures.
Thank you very much. Very well presented. I'm going to open it for a public hearing. Sarah, anyone in queue?
Going on to?
Thank you.
No public comment on the phone.
Thank you very much. Hearing done. I will close public hearing, and I will open it to any Counselors' questions, comments.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to vote on item 2020155 as presented.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. So again, this is to approve item as written, item number 2020-155, Licensing Department. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you, Ms. Scully. So Counselors, as much as I would like to keep pushing on, it is approaching 11 o'clock. We have a little business to do before we close. One would be to do a motion to continue items 2020156 through item 2020-170 that would complete the operating budget. So we're going to push this to another meeting. May I have a motion to approve moving it to June 25th meeting?
Mr. President, I made that motion that we move those items to a special meeting on June 25th, 2020.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to add for public hearings to be held on each individual item at that time.
Okay, so to move these items to a public hearing at a special meeting at that time. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, do you have that? Is that a clear motion?
The motion is very clear. I'm all set.
Thank you. If you do a roll call, please.
Counselors, Dagwone?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much. Now, Counselors, when we have a special meeting, according to our charter, Counselors are to receive within 48 hours of a call a written statement that we have a special meeting. I would ask for a motion to waive the 48-hour notice in the written form. I would like that motion to approve waiving that requirement.
No move.
We have a first and a second. I thank you very much. So this, Madam Clerk, is a vote to approve the waiver of the requirement for 48-hour written notice to the Counselors for a special meeting. Roll call, please.
Counselors, Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much. So Counselors, what I'd like to do is we'll start, this will be next Thursday evening. We'll start the meeting though at 6 o'clock. The purpose of that is with the hope that we can finish up, obviously, the budget, and we also will have regulatory agreement that we'll be discussing. So it would be still a very heavy night. And so if it meets with your approval, we'd like to start at 6 o'clock. Are there any objections from Counselors?
I have a conflict.
You have a conflict?
I do.
How many? You have a conflict at 6 o'clock?
Yes.
I do as well.
Okay. Can you still meet at 7?
I can't meet until 8 o'clock. I'll just be late. I'll just be late. That's all. I will attend, but I will be late.
Okay, thank you. And we certainly don't like doing business without any of our houses in attendance, but in to be fair to everybody, as long as we have a quorum, I think we should keep moving. How about yourself, Counselor Dagwone? Can you join us at one point?
7 is fine.
Okay.
Can you hear me? 7 o'clock. Good.
Thank you very much. Any other Counselors' concerns? If not, we look forward to rejoining, regrouping, and moving ahead on June 25th. That's next Thursday. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
We have a first and a second to adjourn this meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Certainly. Counselors, Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
12 yes.
Thank you very much. I thank you also for staff being with us, our manager, and legal department, and commissioner, I think you're in the background waiting to talk. I'm sorry we didn't get to your items, but again, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you all, each and every Counselor. Absolutely terrific discussion and debate. I can't thank you enough. Have a wonderful, wonderful evening and a good day tomorrow. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.